I called to order the study session of the planning commission for today, Wednesday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We could have a roll call.
Yes, sir. So you got Chair McCacken, excuse me, Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Preston Lefler, I do not see her in attendance. Commissioner Crandall, I do not see him in attendance. Vice Chair, excuse me, Chair Pro Tem Camp, I do not see him in attendance. Vice Chair Cosgrove here and Chair McCann.
Here. Are these mics working? Can we tell?
Yeah, they're working.
Thank you. With that, we have a study session regarding automotive service uses within the Rancho San Clemente and Tulega specific plan. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, planning commissioners. So we're waiting on a, I have a slide to go through here if Cade, Cade was going to share the screen when he's ready. So during the study session, we're going to continue discussion regarding implementation of auto service uses within the business and industrial parks of the Tulega and Rancho San Clemente specific plans. Cade, when you're ready, just go to slide two, please. So this project is one of many components of the city's comprehensive specific plan amendments that will be brought to the planning commissioners later this month as a separate item. As a reminder, the specific plan amendments are updates to the specific plan documents to address state and federal policies, make the documents consistent with the general plans, zoning code and coastal land use plans, and to address goals and policies within the general plan. So as discussed at the previous study sessions and also mentioned, the staff report for this meeting, the expansion of auto uses in the business and industrial parks are directly related to specific goals and policies of the general plan. So staff held two study sessions on the topic, December twenty twenty-one and March twenty twenty-two, where planning commissioners provided their comments and feedback for staff. Next slide, please. So by the end of the study session, staff is requesting consensus from the planning commissioners that the proposed uses and permitting requirements for automotive service uses are acceptable to go forward with the project and that staff has addressed the commissioners' comments from the previous study sessions. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the comments received during the previous study sessions are listed here on the slide. So first commissioners wanted to see updated standards and uses carving out auto delivery centers, differentiating them from vehicle dealerships and sales. Secondly, commissioners were also concerned with the screening of outdoor equipment and vehicle display, as well as the limiting of outdoor operations in general for vehicle dealership, sales and rentals. Also, they wanted to regulate signage, which was important in order to mitigate the abundant use of onsite banners, flags and retail stickers custom for vehicle dealerships. And lastly, it was mentioned that outdoor vehicle washing should be regulated to reduce noise and visibility issues from the public right of way. The next slide, please. So here on this slide, this is the same permitted use table that you see in your staff report. This is what would be presented in Rancho San Clemente specific plan for Tulega. The table would look different as there's no business commercial or industrial park in the area, but the permitted uses would remain the same. So staff separated. We have auto delivery centers here, but we also separated the difference between a vehicle dealership rentals and sales and also electric vehicle dealerships. So staff's intent was to not only incentivize new auto dealerships coming to the area, but in line with the general plan goal and policy to relocate the existing auto uses in the area. And so we wanted to provide some leniency in terms of permitting, but also make sure we were covering all the standards and regulations that we want to see in terms of screening and signage and certain permitting that is normally or customarily required in the city for auto uses. So vehicle rental, sales and dealerships. So vehicle sales are used cars and vehicle dealerships would be new and or used combined. And so here we have outdoor vehicles, ten or more, or ten or fewer vehicles onsite would be permitted by right. And outdoor, more than ten vehicles onsite would be a minor conditional use permit. Normally, that's a conditional use permit, but in order to incentivize for the permitting process or the length of permitting process, we'd lower that to a minor conditional use permit where the planning commission or the zoning administrator, sorry, would review instead of the planning commission for CUP. And so it's the same with electric vehicle dealerships, except we have it marked at thirty or fewer vehicles or thirty or more for a minor, minor conditional use permit in order to provide some support to electric vehicle dealerships coming to the area and then auto delivery centers would be permitted by right. And so vehicle repair, major and minor repair would remain the same. A conditional use permit or permitted by right would be minor repair. And so while we, next slide, please. So while we would allow ten vehicles outside on display in front of the building facade line, which would be a straight, straight line parallel to whatever face of the building is facing the public right of way, we'd want to allow some number of vehicles without the requirement of screening as it's just the natural operations of a vehicle dealership or even an auto delivery center. But more than that, we would want to either screen or require them to provide it in the back of their property away from if you have residential uses or the public right of way. And so we would allow ten vehicles permitted beyond the building facade line, so seen from the public right of way, but any more than ten vehicles would require screening of the vehicles. And if they were to require screening, we want to avoid allowing them to put up walls which would be substantial in heights and not really create the type of the character of the Rancho San Clemente Business Park or Tulega Business Park that we'd want. And so we developed some landscape buffering and screening guidelines. So if they have more than ten in front of the building facade, they would need to implement these landscape buffering and screening guidelines, which we've gone over with staff, but also with a third-party landscape consultant to make sure that we weren't adding anything in there that would hinder just normal operations of the vehicle dealership or auto delivery center for that matter. Okay, next slide, please. So for sign regulations, we're prohibiting signage for auto, any kind of automotive service use without the approval of a permit, either temporary banner permit or even signage that would go along with the special activities permit for like a grand opening or something along those lines. Discretionary or administrative side permit would also be required through the standards required through the zoning code. If you want to look at the section that talks about signage, it's on page five of the staff report. Next slide, please. So vehicle washing area, I think the commissioner that was here that talked about this somewhat at length during the last study session really wanted us to pay attention to not just car washes, but any kind of automotive service use such as a dealership or even rental or an auto delivery center that may wash or detail their cars outdoors. And so we have a, a develop, in the development standards on page five, the staff report as well. It limits the, the use of outdoor car washing or detailing from the public, seen from the public right of way in order to like mitigate noise and visibility. Next slide, please. Okay, so again, we're requesting the commissioners that they have consensus on the permitting requirements as seen in the permitting use table, the definitions provided on pages nine and ten on the staff report, and also that we have addressed the comments that we've discussed the last study sessions. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm happy to go back through any of these slides or talk about any specific pages on the staff report. And that, that concludes my presentation. Commissioner Cosgrove, I know you had a question lined up.
Oh, thank you, Kyle.
Okay.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Oh, thank you. I did. Actually, before I dive into the question, I want to just maybe take a couple steps back. So the general plan basically wants to locate car dealership services in these business parks. That's the goal, right? We want to encourage, and this is the specific things we're recommending to implement that, that would encourage. That's the goal.
Correct.
Okay. So the, I just hesitated because a lot of this is prohibitions and so, you know, encouraging prohibitions are a little bit of, you know, counterintuitive. The thing that I'm thinking about is these are now in business, industrial areas. And so now I'm wondering how important is that visibility, you know? I, I'm just feeling like there might be some discouragement by forcing them to comply with things that say, hey, you can't wash the car in a way that there's a line of sight to it. And in particular, I'm thinking, you know, one of the growing things that's, is these car, car dealing, car detailing. They're not a dealership, but they're just these independent, you know, young entrepreneurs that are detailing cars. They're putting wax on them. They're putting ceramic coating. They're tinting the windows and most of that they do covered, right? They don't want in the direct sun. But these are the kinds of things we want to encourage, right? We want to encourage these electric vehicle delivery centers. We want to encourage even automobile sales, right? So I just, I'm more sympathetic, you know, if it's an industrial area, if it's in a business area, and I looked at the map, there's not really, I didn't really see neighborhoods nearby, right? That the noise will disturb or anything like that. So I'm just, I don't know. Thinking maybe some of it, it might be too restrictive, you know, if we're trying to encourage. So I just, I don't know, as I go through it, you know, I was just thinking maybe some of the screening stuff might be too. I don't know if it's too much, if we don't, if it's really necessary in that kind of a setting, as long as it's clean and neat and organized. I'm okay. I, I think it would be okay. So yeah, before I get into my, the one thing I did have concern about, I wanted to kind of take that tack first.
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Kyle?
Yeah.
By the way, it's nice that you're here in person. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I'm happy to be here in person. Yeah, so the, I think that when we're developing regulations and standards for something like this, it's good to think like as far into the future as possible. So we do have areas in Rancho San Clemente that are zoned residential and some that are near the industrial or business parks or that are zoned light industrial anyway. And though there may not, those, those buildings or establishments near the residential areas are not auto uses or operating outside, it's good to keep in mind that the potential of that happening is possible. And so when it comes to the example that you gave for car washing, that would be a standard that they would need to follow if they, if you have an auto use that's required approval of a minor conditional use permit. It's likely that there'd be a condition of approval within that project that would prohibit them from any kind of outdoor car washing that is seen from the public right of way. But if the use is permitted by right, that is still a standard that they have to follow. And next part I'm getting into, Adam may be able to speak on that as well, but it, it seems like it would hinder a business, but if they do end up operating or washing cars and visible to the public, that could, that was, that's most likely just a warning for them to stop doing that. And they wouldn't lose their business license or such. And I think that if all of a sudden in the future, we have ten auto uses in one line and they're all washing outside, I think that's what the commissioner last time was getting at. We want to make sure that we're preventing it, preventing any kind of issues that could occur from the washing such, such as noise, something like that. So I think the provision to have it screened or to limit noise at least is good as long as it's not too limiting to your point.
Yeah.
And so.
I, you know, car washes for sure, right? Those are big. That's what I'm thinking, I don't maybe see it on here on your table too, which would be a car detailer.
That would fall under mi- minor and major repair. We'd have to look at the definition.
Okay, because those guys are typically one or two people in a very small, you know, area, and they're working on one car at a time.
Sure. Cade, can we pull up slide eleven or twelve of?
It would be nice to have some of those businesses in San Clemente, you know?
Yeah. I agree. Let's see.
While the correct slide is, is coming up, I, I would just like to address your question specifically.
Excellent.
Cosgrove.
Sure.
So the, the general plan does, it wants, it, it, its intent was to do two things and it's, the first is to move automotive uses off of El Camino Real. Second is to move them, encourage them into our, our business parks. And staff has familiarity with the business park specific plans and looking at the documents as a whole, there is a, there's an overarching goal of creating what are, what have become some really nice. I'll say more tranquil types of business parks and industrial parks. And so our goal here is to encourage as much as we can while still trying to maintain the, the existing character of the business parks to the extent that they can be maintained while encouraging these new uses. So there's a, there is a balance that, that we're trying to achieve here. But again, this is the point of the study sessions to elicit these, the, these, these types of comments from the commissioners and, and help steer us in the, in the direction.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer those suggestions that maybe specifically auto detailing, we might want to call that out. And maybe you do it by size. I don't know. The other thing that's on El Camino are the big tire stores too, and they take up a lot of space and we'd maybe would want to see some tire stores go into these business parks as well.
So I think I gathered most, most of that. I just wanted to point out that detailing would more than likely fall under the definition for major vehicle repair, which does now require a conditional use permit or a detailing. Well, if we consider automotive painting shops or customizing of auto.
Yeah, I'm thinking of just, this is one or two guys and they just do the cleaning, maybe put on a ceramic paint protection. They'll put in the windows. That's it. And it's usually a single bay, maybe two, and they're usually doing these things pretty quietly and indoors. So maybe you might want to think about that, Kyle. We would, I think it'd be great business to have in our community. So that's the so, suggestion. The only thing I wanted to maybe introduce here on the signage that I think is the most objectionable is the inflatable signs. Whether it be the balloons or the squiggly guy that's, you know, twenty feet in the air. Those are the things I think most people don't want to see. So, and I didn't know we, I didn't necessarily see the inflatable signs as a category. So in general, I don't think those are good, good signs in the city, but.
I think most people might, might agree with you. So we look at those signs as moving signs in the zoning code. And I have the sign ordinance here in the slides. It might, without me controlling it, it might be a little difficult to find it. And so I can't tell you if that requires an administrative permit or discretionary sign permit.
It would actually be prohibited. So what we're, what we're, what we're doing here is we are creating regulations to only allow signage for automotive related uses that can be, can be obtained by obtaining a permit for such sign. Our, our code only allows for certain types of signage. So if it's, if, if you can't get a permit for it, it, you, you can't have that type of signage.
Gotcha.
That limits a lot of the, we'll call it the more, the more flashy kinds of, of signage that auto, auto dealerships used car lots, those, those types tend to have.
Just to clarify, moving signs are permitted in all zones in the city. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Prohibited.
Prohibited. I say permit, sorry, permit.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. Okay, Kyle, thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Chair, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
I got one. So a couple of things. One, I, I've seen some really classy automotive dealerships and that would be really cool to see up there. You know, I mean, there's some, I'm not talking El Camino Real. I'm like, you know, no disrespect to those guys, but you know, I mean, some really classy stuff. Two things, maybe three, but how can you go into more detail on how we're enticing companies to leave El Camino Real where they've been there twenty, thirty years and going up to, you know, the, the business park or the industrial park? Because it's gonna have to be pretty enticing.
Well, that's a great question, Commissioner Davis. So as far as our opportunities go with zoning, we, we tend to have two tools. One is to open up uses, allowable uses in one area and restrict allowable uses in another. That's what the general plan essentially has done. Over time, we find that successful businesses tend to want to grow and by limiting that footprint or creating a legal non-conforming use, it limits how much growth opportunity there is in an existing location. And so while, while there's no amortization to the, to the automotive uses in, on El Camino Real, what we're attempting in this instance is to create something much more favorable in a, in a long-term growth setting for those types of businesses. Additional types of incentives to relocate would really fall into either an economic development mi- mindset or, or work program. We're doing what we can with zoning at this time.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a tough, tough one. Now, oh, so in this map here, the overlay is like City Hall in there, right? Am I right? Rainbow, rainbow sandals.
That's correct.
Let me keep wrapping some off. Dermatologist.
Most, I, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I, there are medical offices.
Medical offices.
Yes.
Accountants.
Yes.
They're not going to want to have an automotive place next door to them. That scares me a little bit. That's what I don't think about this over. Is if I had a really night, you know, I came in, you know, and I have clientele showing up as a CPA coming into my office and you got, you know, the automotive shop, which I like, you know, I deal in both areas of my life. I, I wouldn't be happy at all having somebody come in and put my lift and a couple of cars outside and all the, you know, oil changes and whatever happens. But if you go to an industrial automotive section and that's all I work is in an industrial environment, so I see everything. But you very specifically realize it's a, you're, you're, your sidewalks look different. You're because of oil being tracked in and out. Your, your, the pavement looks different. But everything about that vibe doesn't work for me. So I don't think we can open up as wide as this is.
And I, that's a great comment. I would, I would say that staff would would recommend that the uses, especially what's permitted and what's, what would require a discretionary approval, either through a minor conditional use permit or a conditional use permit. The, you focus on, on those because that's really the dividing line between what somebody can op, can open and operate with just the application, sometimes just the application of a business license, maybe a building permit, so they can come in and all of those are ministerial approvals versus what they need to get approval to operate a business that would require noticing to neighboring property owners so that those types of concerns can be raised in a public hearing setting. That's, that's one. The second is what you're speaking to is exactly the balance that staff is trying to achieve here by maintaining the business parks that we have now, which are quite, they're quite favorable and attractive to office uses. One thing to keep in mind is that the, while there are a number of office uses that would permit direct customer interactions, meaning customers come to those properties. For the most part, the business parks are designed for business-to-business type activities or distributors, wholesalers, things of that nature. However, over time, and, and this is, a lot of this is market-driven, is who are, who is actually occupying the business parks and, and I, I, I agree, there are a number of those types of uses that would be, that would be sensitive.
We just had the situation where that rugby, outside rugby places wanting to go outside and, and practice and then the school above that, right? So now it's a school and then there's a rock climbing area up in here. I don't know. I, I think, I think i- is it possible to be more restrictive in this area? I mean, what's the vacancy rate anyway? You know, I mean, it's like, can't be very much. I think all these things are occupied, but can't like, so if, if I went in with an automotive permit and I was, you know, whomever automotive down from El Camino Real, I have a good reputation, do really good work, or Robbie's Tire, for instance, right? And I go up there and that was really clean operation, but I go up there and, and it put a permit in and then you put it out to the neighbors and the neighbors aren't happy with it. I'm gonna say, look, this guy just doesn't like me. It's not his.
Can I jump in on, on, on just one thing real quick? I don't mean to cut you off at all, but what Adam was saying relative to, so the CUP, conditional use permit
Yeah.
is a big deal. So if, if they're gonna do stuff that, that staff feels falls in the category that they need a CUP, that means it's going to be kind of more intensive. That gives the planning commission a lot more discretion to say yay or nay or put extra conditions on, basically extra policing, and it gives the city staff a lot more teeth to go after and say, hey, you guys can't be, you know, there can't be oil changes out here in the parking lot. Everything's, you, you, your, your permit, which you've got approved in front of planning commission says you can only do that stuff inside and you can't store chemicals and materials outside. It's all got to be inside and, and, and there's a lot more policing and teeth if it has a CUP. So, so I think the things that you're kind of mentioning and, and or fearing, right? Which is all legit, right? Because we all see that every time we go different places to get our cars done. But it gives staff more teeth to, to police it and keep it the way that we envision it and that the neighbors want it. Is that, would you say that's an accurate statement?
That's very accurate and I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll follow that up by saying that the the staff's proposed amendment to the specific, to these specific plans currently, they, they represent a line in the sand where we feel that by right uses, meaning a business license or a building permit is all that's required to begin that, that business versus those that require discretionary permit, that there's a line in the sand there where the by right uses would be, would not be terribly impactful or a negative, create negative consequences for nearby neighbors because they're of such a low intensity that they would basically they would be compatible with existing other, other permitted uses. But beyond that point, that's when discretionary review is required, which gives staff the opportunity to analyze the proposal and make recommendations to either this body or the zoning administrator that requires findings to be made. And those findings include things like that, that you proposed use will not be detrimental to the, to the surrounding properties. And it's at that time that's, that, that's the crux of the, of the question of what is the proposal getting to a point where it needs that type of, of, of analysis? Again, I'm, I'm saying this is where we are in, in our proposal right now, but we're listening, we want to elicit that feedback to, you know, in a stroll, pull, straw poll kind of way, are the, are the planning commissioners seeing this vision the way that staff is?
And for me, it kind of goes both ways, you know, like the, you don't want fighting amongst neighbors, you know, and, and I don't want to create that or even give the option of that happen or try to minimize that, you know? And what triggers a, a conditional use permit in this area?
If you're a, if you're a.
If you're a, if you're a major, if you're a major repair.
Maybe we could pull up that, that slide again. And go through the uses because that's, that's a really critical aspect.
Page four, table two of this.
Or we would go to the, we would be on the same slide as we were last time, Kate, whichever one that was. Well, we, I think we wanna look at the definitions at first.
But you know, if you look at page five, cause I used to have that concern, but you have. But if you look at page five, item number three, screening of service areas. Every activity of the business has to be inside. Um, so if you're talking about like the tire shops. You know, like on El Camino, they are inside, but they also gonna have to be oriented. They cannot be oriented in public right of way or residential. So I mean, the noise is going away from you, public street or away from the homes. And then number five, that talks about, you know, waxing and all this kind of stuff, it's not making noise. Although it's all subject to the noise ordinance, so anybody could kind of complain. Yeah, it's gonna be visually obstructed. Now, our vet is up in, you know, this area. And they still are seeing. Patients, you know, animals, and you have to be outside your car. And right across the little area, cause anything that's exposed to the public is really parking. So you can't, you know, if you're gonna do your activity for your business, it's either in your back or it's inside. Um, and you don't hear anything, cause on the one side is a grinding shop. And they are all, they usually put down their thing when they're grinding and to the street side is some kind of automobile. Thing that's all done inside and in their back fence is just storage. You don't hear anything when you. So. That's what's less than, you know, sort of my concern. It's that almost all the actions inside. Almost everything that's in front of the businesses is parking, so you cannot break your business in your required parking. So it's kind of. And none of the bays are open to the major streets. So sound, you know, and all that activity doesn't go to the street. Or residential area.
And then the, uh, uh, the, the thought is you clean up El Camino Real and, and with both businesses and change them to. Other types of businesses?
Yes, uh, there are still uh, a, a number of uh, of their uses that general plan. Uh, is, is more encouraging of locating there and the idea is that over time, those, those auto uses. Would be replaced by um, uses that tend to be a bit more um, uh, uh. Visitor serving, pedestrian oriented, things of that nature.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, since we're on this slide and I apologize, Chair, uh, since we're on this slide. If you'd like to go through these uses a little bit more, uh, the, 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 the main difference. That we're looking at is the, is the P, which is permitted, that means by right. Versus the M CUP or the CUP, both of which are discretionary. So. For example, uh, vehicle rental, sales and dealerships, staff uh, is, is, is comfortable proposing. Hey, that if there are uh, outdoor ten or fewer vehicles. That, that would be, that could be done in a way that's compatible, assuming it meets all the development standards that, uh, that Kyle discussed earlier. Uh, that that would be compatible with the general uses of a business park. However, if they've got more than ten vehicles, we're getting to a point of intensity where it's no longer compatible with. Uh, things like medical office or, or the like.
And I'll add that the section, I think it's subsection G five. Where it lists the development standards for auto service uses that even if it's permitted by right, they would need to follow those development standards and operational standards. Which, um, if there's something in there that you feel that is missing, that would not be. Um, covered under something that would be permitted by right and not reviewed by a decision-making body, we could. Potentially add something if there's specific uh, issues that you think are not covered.
Excellent, thank you.
And personally, I like detailing to come under car washing. Cause it is a CUP and I know like in up, in our neighborhood, most guys are pretty good. They control their water flow and they control their sound, but some don't. So that's why I think detailing should be on, cause it depends on what you're detailing, what you're doing. Do you have a compressor? Do you have a buffer? Yeah, that makes noise.
Yeah, well, um, so. You know, we do understand that there are indoor and outdoor uses. Um, the uh, outdoor, outdoor. I'll say outdoor operations, um, would tend to move things into a discretionary. Um, uh, discretionary process, uh, the, the intent, even in the uh, in the zoning ordinance. Um, versus uh, versus the specific plans, um, which also t- tend to encourage. Businesses to be conducted within enclosed structures. Um, there are things that are allowed to occur outside, but the, the, the intent of these documents is. It's really to confine uses to be within uh, indoors. Uh, and so then that's why you see some of the differentiation between number of vehicles indoors versus outdoors. Uh, things of that nature.
Commissioner McCacken, did you have any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a couple. Um, regarding the ten, the ten cars or fewer. And the facade line, so are you saying that if they're gonna have ten cars or fewer in front? Of the front facade, but they could have a hundred cars in the back behind the. Building or behind the facade line, is that accurate?
That would be an accurate statement. To, to allow them accurate, to allow them to have that. Concealed behind the building facade line at least, but allow them ten or fewer in the front.
Okay, yeah, cause ten is not very many for a vehicle sales. Place or rental, so, okay. You talked about car washing. And I'm. I think I'm quoting it verbatim, seen from any public right of way. Um, which seems a little vague to me. I mean, if you're on a corner lot, I can see that, but. Depending on, you know, where you are, if you're down in the hall, you might be able to be seen from somewhere, some other public right away, far away. Should we maybe define that to be from the right of way in front of the? In front of the property?
I mean, yeah, that's something that we, we can add. So I was just making sure that, um. I think that even from residential areas, we'd want to. Obscure the view from their properties regardless if they see it five blocks away from a. A high elevation, but I see your point.
I mean.
That, that might be too limiting.
Where we're, where we're talking about, I mean, I just don't wanna, it's a little bit ridiculous, okay, but, but. Um. For one, I, I'm not sure if from like an upper street, you could see down onto a lower street, that's. You know, a block and a half away, but from an upper position, you could see down. Even maybe into someone's quote-unquote backyard or, you know, rear setback area, whatever.
Um, do you think providing a radius around a property would be?
Yeah, I, I mean, something like that, yeah, just so there's some kind of.
Okay.
Just so somebody doesn't go crazy with, well, I could see it with my binoculars from behind Lowe's and.
I agree with what you're saying and I'm glad you pointed that out, cause I didn't catch that and so we can look into something that would. Make that more possible to follow without.
More reasonable.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I would be, you know, I'd probably have a little bit of a concern about it because when you get up into some of the designs like where our vet is. If you don't say public right of way, then like these grinding shops, instead of being a get, instead of being pointed to the other industrial. You know, cubicles, that could mean that some of these businesses could point out. Well, instead you're thinking of the public right of way of the street, which they can't. But there is public right of way coming in, you know, the parking, so that I don't want them to think that they can orient their. Garage doors towards that parking, cause right now they can't. In other words, that's where like the office is. And then their garage where noise would emanate from it is always perpendicular to anywhere where there's a public access. And I think that keeps the noise down, it keeps the noise within the little concrete. Well, you, just like that one map, if we look at it again, you know, you have these little arterials coming in. So it means the noise is gonna go to either one of the neighbor's buildings or the back of the neighbor's building. But it's never gonna come out to anywhere where I'm gonna be parking my car or driving my car. And I think that's a good, especially when you get out to some main arterials, we just had a church, remember the church? And people across Pico were upset, cause they didn't want music coming out, so I think you need to have the residential and public right of way. Cause those are gonna mean your streets and public access, where the public is gonna be, you're gonna want the noise. To come out of the building away from the public.
Again, I think maybe adding a specific distance or radius may help that.
Have a corner lot, that owner who's ever coming, who's interested in the corner lot, will know ahead of time that, you know, you can't. Your noise cannot come out to the residential. Or a public right of way, so if you're on a corner street, except that person really wants to have all these bay doors all around, he doesn't wanna be on the corner lot. He wants to be on, you know, cause on the corner lot, you only got two places we can, as long as there's not a parking arterial coming up. So, you know, for some of it, the, the applicant needs to be kind of smart on where he's gonna locate. Otherwise, he or she's gonna have to ask us for permission, cause I think we need, the public will complain about sound. You're, you need to keep that inside to the, to the most educated.
Yeah, staff will, um, staff will. Um. Address those concerns with some um, potential other options uh, when we bring this back. I, I would say. Um, you know, the, the business parks uh, tend to be located. In areas where there's not a lot of impacts on, on residential nearby. Um, and I say that because. Um. In the. I say that because there are a number of uses that could potentially create a lot of sound. Um, and there's, there's no. Uh, existing radius needed from residential for. Those types of uses and while uh. Uh, while issues have come up about noise related to um, residential. Those typically get addressed through a discretionary process. Um, rather than creating another, um, uh, creating another. I'll say development standard. Um. Limiting. Li- limiting uh, somebody based on a distance. Um, and I, and the reason, that, the reason I think that's important is because in some instances, three hundred feet from residential. Makes a huge difference. Um, however, there's many times where three hundred feet. Is not gonna make, it, it, there, it, it's going to make much less of a dis- a difference because there's a, a very large hill. Between the two uses. And so in the vein of trying to encourage, I, I, I would. I, I think I, um, I can speak for, for staff on this, we would prefer to, to identify the uses. Um, that could potentially affect uh, residential and require discretionary process for those. But not potentially unnecessarily limit other uses just simply because of a, a distance. Uh, that may not be an issue at all because of uh, topography. Sorry for the long response on that.
No problem, we appreciate the input. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, this, the whole reason this has been looked at is because there was this desire. At, at the council level to, to encourage automotive uses going into. The business park. We wanna open that up and that came from, from the general plan. And the council's adoption of the general plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not something that staff just dreamed up, it's, this is official policy, we wanna. Encourage this.
Yes, this is part of uh, the planning division's work program to uh, to bring our uh, specific plans and, and. Uh, zoning ordinance into compliance with the general plan. Uh, that's one of our requirements, that those documents cannot be um, uh, they, they, they must be. Um, consistent. And what we're doing at this point is we're making those documents consistent based off the. Direction of the general plan, which is the overarching policy document of the city.
Thank you. And I, I'd like to note for the record too, that uh, Commissioner Randall joined us during the studies, study session. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Um. Uh, th- this is a kind of obvious, but I think it should just be noted that. Um, just in my small tenure here, we have a lot of different people wanting to go into the business park. And in that process, I, you know, I've observed, there's preschools in there. There are, there are so many different uses. There's office, there's vets, there's automotive, there's a brewery. City Hall, there's a post office. Uh. You know, it does get down to the, you know, and we had, see it in Los Molinos with the industrial, we see a brewery, we see. There's an, there's a lot of different services in these uses. That are designated business park or light industrial. And I think to some degree, people need to understand what they're signing up for. We can't protect everybody against everything. And we are a small town and it's a great problem to have. People want to be here. So they're finding any available spot to go and our, our developments, our development standards are quite broad. When you look at what's allowable uses in all these different zones, they overlap a lot. And so you can have a restaurant in all sorts of uses from commercial to light industrial to he- to, you know, business parks you can have. So we're gonna have a lot of commingled uses. That's just gonna be the way it is. So I, I applaud staff for trying to do the best they can to encourage, but yet protect and this is this back and forth, it's a fine. It's a fine balance you're trying to strike. And I think what I try to do from my perspective is just. Acknowledge the market is at work and if people are gonna wanna locate themselves in a business park, they're gonna have to realize. Yeah, that my neighbor might be noisy. Okay, is that, that's my call if I'm gonna choose that. Cause it's a permitted use and I'm not gonna move in there and then start complaining. I don't think that is a good, you know, we, we need to just be mindful of that. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Um, have we, as a commission, given staff enough feedback of what they're looking for or is there? Is there, are you looking for a straw poll or?
Um, we appreciate the comments that we've received so far. Uh, if there are any additional, we will accept them. I, I. Unless there is a topic that has not been discussed by one of the commissioners at this time. Um, we would want to elicit uh, those comments. However, this will be coming back to the planning commission and if there are any additional comments that the. Commission may have uh, on an individual basis, feel free to reach out to either myself or Kyle. We'd be happy to um, answer any additional questions you might have in preparation for the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Okay.
With that, we will adjourn. To the next regular study session to be held Wednesday, September twenty first, twenty twenty two at five PM. At the San Clemente Community Center Auditorium, one hundred, Caius Sevilla, Seville, San Clemente, California.
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, motion by Vice Chair Cosgrove, second by Chair Crandall. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Absent. I was absent, so I needed.
Thank you. Any opposed? So we have, um, all ayes except, uh, abstain from Commissioner McCacken and, uh,
I was not present either.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Vice Chair Protem Camp and.
So that's.
Prescott Loffler's not here.
Four, four yeas and two abstains.
Yes. Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak tonight on an item, on anything not covered in, that we're not going to be discussing in the meeting? Okay, seeing none, we can, uh, don't have any public comment, nothing on consent calendar. So, public hearings. We have, uh.
So, uh, Chair McCann, uh, we have a staff presentation, um, and, uh, it will be, uh, conducted by Chris Wright. Um, after such time, I believe that we have some speaker cards. However, um, uh, you're more than welcome to do this in whatever order you want. This is not a typical application, uh, where we have a, uh, 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 an applicant presentation, so to speak. So if you'd like to start with the staff presentation and then take public comment, we're.
Yeah, I think that's probably the logical order.
Right. Kate, if you can.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, members of the public. This is item eight A. So West Pico Corridor Specific Plan and Expansion of the Architectural Overlay District. Next slide. This project was initiated by the City Council in two thousand twenty one. Uh, the approvals that are requested, it's a city nation project, uh, with the general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a land use plan amendment for the local coastal program, and then a zoning amendment for the zoning map and parts of zoning ordinance. The review process, after we had the city council meeting, we had a number of community meetings, uh, which we sent a notice to the, uh, all the property owners that would be part of this project area uh, for that first meeting. And in that notice, we let everyone know that there would be a project website, which they could continue to get updates on this project. And we've been updating it routinely. Uh, we also had a planning commission study session at one point, and then we talked with the design review subcommittee to get input on the Los Molinos Design Guidelines, part of this project and the specific plan. At the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution for these amendments and, uh, certifying an addendum to the general plan E I R. Uh, also, there are some changes that staff's recommending that I've provided copies on. We'll go through those. Uh, so staff would request that those be included into the record, uh, as part of the action. Next slide, please. So the first part of this, to really emphasize, the majority of the documents before you are not substantive changes. There's changes that I'm going to try to focus on, the big, the big pieces that council directed us to pursue. The first of which is to make a land use change in the Los Molinos Industrial Park. This is a cleanup item. So right now, there is a, a split of the land use boundaries between high industrial and light industrial in these two parcels at fifteen ten Avenue to De La Estrella. There's currently a towing service and salvage yard there. So that is a non-conforming use under the light industrial zone. Uh, by changing it to high industrial, it would make that use conforming. So that's the first intent. The second is it makes it easier to implement policy and rules when there's one zone. And that's best practice to, to have. Uh, the outcome of the city council did say they did not, they wanted to exclude the ability to have concrete batch plants. That's a use you can get in a heavy industrial zone with a conditional use for it. They did not want that to be an option. So that's reflected in the amendments you have. Um, that by allowing this change, it would allow at most twelve thousand square feet of new floor area on the properties. However, we should note that there's driveways, uh, often in these light industrial areas that would limit that potential. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the next change is an expansion of the Architectural Overlay District where Spanish Colonial Revival is required. The gray parcels on this map is the downtown and pierable, where that type of architecture is required in the, the district. This would add the orange parcels. The intent here is to add parcels that join primary circulation routes between the downtown and the pierable. So to have one cohesive district, uh, when you're driving through the area. And, uh, that actually is, uh, compatible with the pierable specific plan guidelines. It, it makes it a little easier to implement those uh, for that look. This would require changes to the general plan map, uh, zoning map and, and other things that, that are all in your amendments. Um, next slide, please. Then the next direction was to update the pierable specific plan to be consistent with the general plan that was updated in two thousand fourteen with some amendments since. Uh, as part of the update, um, there is a general plan, Los Molinos Focus Area that came out. As part of the update, there is a general plan, Los Molinos focus area that came out of the general plan update with policies. For Los Molinos. And. Starting this project, it was recommended to expand the specific plan so that it is a better tool. To implement the policies for Los Molinos. And this is why, if you look at this map. The expanded boundary would add the entirety of that Los Molinos focus area. So the specific plan follows. The general plan focus area. In addition, there is a green shaded area that's part of Benito Canyon Park. That is recommended as part of public input. The number of the businesses in the area had suggested including it. So if you're driving down Caile de Los Molinos and any public improvements for the park, maybe have the same type of design that you would. You would have in Los Molinos according to the design guidelines. That was, that was the intent there. Then the red shaded parcels are on Caile Lago and North El Camino Real. They are light industrial currently, but they have four overlays of which if they redevelop the property, it's supposed to be mixed use or commercial. Because that's a cleanup item to make it part of the specific plan. Currently, we don't have zoning standards. So city council supported this idea of expanding the area of specific plan. Next slide. This is a map showing what the land use map would be in the specific plan. You could see it follows that outer boundary. Next slide. There's a number of changes that we make to reflect overlays that are in the zoning code and in the general plan. All the standards that we've incorporated into these amendments are to implement. And be fully consistent with the general plan, which is a requirement of state law. So again, the primary objective of this project is to make our documents consistent. Next slide, please. Then. There is a general plan implementation measure and some policies that pertain to which, which type of architecture is required in this. This specific plan area. There's policies that say you should have Spanish or Spanish colonial revival and Via Pico Plaza and Pico Corridor. Including the maintenance yard and areas that are not adjoining the I five freeway and Avenue de Pico off-ramp and intersection. Staff is recommending to make that all Spanish colonial revival. So that you exit the freeway and you travel down Pico, you have one style of design that follows through to North Beach and down. Consistently. The next thing is the yellow area. That is the El Camino Real. District that we're proposing where the zoning code says you can have, you're required to have. A true form of Spanish architecture. That means Mission, Monterey, Mediterranean, Spanish Colonial Revival. We, in this document, we include some design guidelines for that. And we, on this map, have a line through those parcels. Because the back of those properties sloped down to Los Molinos. And when you have any improvements below El Camino Real, it really. Fits in more with Los Molinos than the Spanish district. So this map. Indicates that the purple area, including the back of those properties, would be in the Los Molinos district. There was a lot of focus, a lot of meetings with businesses in Los Molinos. To discuss what is Los Molinos architecture? Because our policy is broad, just as an eclectic mix of design and architecture, public art. So we had a lot of discussions about what that means. We had a designer subcommittee meeting. And ended up including a vision statement to lay out what type of design should be considered. When a project comes forward. But there were not a lot of design guidelines added to that area, just little adjustments to reflect that vision statement. Next slide, please. So the recommendations to adopt the planning commission resolution, which is tab C in your binder. And also to include a RADA that I've given you a copy of. The RADA copy doesn't show the red line. It just didn't print that way, but I have the word document if you did want to see the. Strike through and underline edits. What I suggest going. To go through this document is after public comment. To go through it by tab, and then when we get to the specific plan to go by chapter, if you can. Tell me if you have any comments on pages or questions, we could go over those. And we can go through their RADA as we get to the specific plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Just to confirm, is the RADA available to the public and, and or especially to those people that are here? Is there a copy available for them?
Yeah, I can make my copy available.
Do you think it's appropriate to? Kind of mention some of the highlights of the RADA or the specifics of it, or I guess that's maybe a Mal question.
I was planning on pulling it up on the screen when we get through the document, but I can show it now if you'd like.
If you think it makes more sense to, well, I kind of think we should do it now before the public comment in case. The public.
Okay.
Has comment on it.
Okay.
They could have reviewed the, the, the document itself before, before tonight's meeting, but not the RADA, it sounds like.
Mr.
Sure.
I would actually recommend that we follow Mr. Wright's lead here, maybe take a public comment. And then it, at the end of it, if those comments are handled in here, he can simply indicate that. But I'd hate to hold up the public while we go through all this, maybe get their comments up front. And then that would be, you know, give them the time to stay or go if they want.
Okay, I guess. Two questions. One, Chris, how long do you think it would take to go through the RADA? And two, Mal, do you want to weigh in on this? Question?
It might take me five minutes or less.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mal, what do you think?
There's, there's no legal issue with doing it now. If there's no legal impact on waiting.
Okay, I. It'd be my preference to do it before so the public at least can hear it before they comment. But I don't want to rule this like a dictator. Are we in agreement or do you guys feel strongly one way or the other?
I agree that the public should have the information before they speak.
Okay, so with that, Chris, if you could go through the RADA. And, and to those particular that are here, there is a hard copy available for, for reviewing. We're sorry, it's not sooner.
I was just for everyone to know, I was preparing this like up to an hour before the meeting, so sorry. So, and the, the reason for that is we wanted to make this meeting move smoothly by trying to limit the amount of changes we make here at the meeting. So I, I'll go through these items. The first is to replace a map in the document for the general plan overlays. We, I noticed that the land use designations in the general plan were shown on the map in addition to the overlays. So it's a cleanup. It's not, it's just to clean up the map and only show the overlays. The second item is to change some wording for the mixed use overlay. We got some comments. From Mark McGuire regarding three parcels, the Caile Lago and. Sorry, just. Okay, thanks. So there are some comments regarding the mixed use overlay that includes three parcels. Two are on Caile Lago. And one is at sixteen-twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken, North El Camino Real. The North El Camino Real property is landlocked. It's not adjacent to a street. And in the mixed use overlay. It's, it's really to create a, an intent, long-term, for there to be mixed use on these properties. Currently, there's light industrial. And I had added language in these amendments to identify that point in which light industrial uses should end. And when mixed use or commercial should begin, and that's like the official zone for the, the properties. And we got comments about. Maybe changing the nature of when that, that breaking point is. So I added language in here, until there is zoning approval and building permits are issued. For the development of a commercial or mixed use project according to standards. And permitted uses in this section and other applicable overlay standards. Versus unless there is a change of use or industrial uses are discontinued more than a year. And then towards the end, there was a comment of regarding. An inconsistency with the floor air ratio for the property in the general plan. It's two point O, so I cleaned that up from one point five. And then the minimum commercial floor area, we had point two, I changed it to point one. Talking with Mark McGuire, there's some really good comments about how that one property north on North El Camino Real is landlocked. And so the intent with the visitor serving commercial district is that you have forty feet of commercial at the ground floor. For pedestrian uses. These properties are not very visible to North El Camino Real. They are pushed back. It's, it's frankly, pretty unlikely that you would attract uses other than maybe service businesses or offices. That's probably more likely, maybe occasional restaurants. But well, I, I had. Just, I, I, staff supports these changes with a calculation of what is the approximate amount of floor area? For a forty-foot deep area along these properties. And we came to a point one. So, and then applying it over the entirety of those, of that area versus on each parcel. Because it's, it's quite likely that with incentives here. To merge one or more, you know, two or three of these parcels to develop them. And then that would accommodate that and make it a little simpler to implement these standards. So that, that's what this item is. And just to note, we can come back to all this, but for just for the public, we'll go through it. So the, the next item is to replace the roadways map. There was a note that it showed some streets and some properties. We just used the data we had and. Ended up taking off the, one of the layers to only show the arterial streets. That's just a cleanup item. And then on page G forty-five, there is a reference. It's just cleaning up a section reference instead of referring to the landscape, character description and. Chapter two and, and the design guidelines more generally. So that's just a section of reference cleanup. On page G fifty-six for the Los Molinos district. I had observed that the language was more restrictive than the zoning code. The zoning code says that you should have ten feet of landscaping between a street and a parking lot. And it was worded from the property line versus from the street. So I changed that wording and also added a sentence here. And public visible landscaping between a street and structures with adequate space to support street trees, basically at least four feet from the sidewalk. Because there are standards to have street trees along the street. And that would accommodate it without getting into. Exactly how requiring a setback or so much specific landscaping. Considering every site is different and every design can be unique to fit that site, and this would accommodate that. For the Avenue de Pico entry on page G. Sixty-one, I just cleaned up the section reference again to be more general, so reference the landscape concept in chapter two. On page G seventy-one, I removed this figure that is not in the document. So that was just a cleanup. On G seventy-two, it's a cleanup, a section, a letter was wrong, so I changed it to A. On G seventy-seven. Wait, I think I've put one two times. Yeah, this, this one's two times, sorry. G seventy-seven, architectural guidelines. There was removal of endworm-like colors. Because there's examples in the document and there's examples of buildings currently in Los Molinos with like a darker gray color. That are attractive and we didn't want to limit businesses from being able to do that. So we took that out. And then for the roof guidelines in Los Molinos, we removed wall. Is, that's not pertaining to roofs and then including unfinished metal roof, roof, roofing. And just leave it at highly reflective surfaces are strongly discouraged. And that was the intent. All along. For those Caile Lago and North El Camino Real properties. It's to add the existing use of the property so that it's conforming, which is commercial storage. And I limited those properties. So there's self-storage and recreational vehicle storage to make that, those properties conforming. I put that use in there. That was in response to comments from Mark McGuire. For the light, light industrial development standards. Like I had pointed out before, the change in the wording and when something has to become mixed use on those three parcels. That same text is in here. So that's, it's just maintaining what we've already discussed. Same with this next item. Until there's zoning approval and building permits on those three properties. And then this is to change three development standards on those properties. One, we already talked about with the commercial floor area over the entirety of the zone. The next is the height. So if you're doing a parking structure at sixteen-twenty-three North El Camino Real, that property drops into a bowl. So there's a hole there and to accommodate a mixed use project with parking at the first level. This would measure the height. If you did a parking structure at the first level. The height would be measured from North El Camino Real. So that when you look at the project, it would be three stories and it would comply with that height limit. You wouldn't see that parking level below in the hole. And that would be only if you're doing mixed use on the property. And then the last thing, I think that's, I don't know. The changes I already talked about, when those three properties had to become mixed use. You have it here in standard eighteen. And you have it on this next page, G one fifty-five, right here. The last one is to add a definition of commercial storage. I did it to reflect that existing use on the properties. The renting and leasing of individual storage spaces to customers for the purpose of storing and removing. Personal property in the storage of recreational vehicles in a screen yard. That's the extent of the RADA.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So it says if, when the permit. Is issued, where's the permits not acted on? Does it? Like they don't end up building the project? Does it revert or does it continue? Because just pulling a permit doesn't mean you're going to build it. So does it go back to the industrial?
Well, if they don't pull the permit and they're not going to pursue the project, yeah. You know, the, the idea is that you're changing the use of the property and the revised wording is to. It's meant to tie it more to an investment in a project, right? Someone is. Pursuing a project to change the use of the property versus taking a building and switching out a use of a building. If they don't do the project, then yeah, it would go back to light industrial.
Okay, thank you, Chris, very much for going through that. I have speaker cards. I have four speaker cards. If anybody has not filled out a speaker card but wants to speak, please fill out a card. Uh, fill out a card. I apologize in advance for when I butcher your name. I'm talking to you, Gary. Our first speaker is Gary. How do you pronounce that? Giacominie, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Gary Giacominie, as we said. And I've been a long time. In that area in Los Molinos. And I've been working with staff and. And we're with Chris and our group here, guys in the area. Business owners listening to everything. And um, I had a little presentation, I don't know if it's up there or not, but.
Yes, we'll we'll pull it up.
Okay, I just put this together just to kind of reflect after listening to all this over the last year and I was on the general plan back. In two thousand fourteen. And seeing the area and I think. It's really a hard job that Chris and everybody's had to go through here because how do you take an area that's old and. It's got things are built back in and try to make it. Nice, you know, and and improve it. And I think there's a lot of business owners are real. Anxious to do stuff and then haven't had the tools and I hope this plan now as it's implemented. Does that for us? And I I wanted to show some of the slides, just my my thing is always safety. And cleaning up thing and making it neat, how do we get? Through the city and working with the owners to accomplish this and make it more. It's becoming more like the brewery and more of investment coming in there. I can see the area changing to be this special little area down. And. As I was showing sidewalks, that's one of the things that Chris and I worked on in in our group. Is how to make that corridor and you look at the general plan, it tells you in there. This Los Molinos is like the gateway, you're gonna walk somewhere in the business there. Have a nice sidewalk that's flat. And you know, when we have limited, it's kind of like Balboa Island, we have little spaces sometimes. So how do we? Implement that to work for everybody? Not get, you know, when guy goes to pull permit or a minor permit or something like that, he doesn't go into tailspin. So I think. The way that he's, you know, Chris has. Put this together and made this more tweaking, but I think it takes like here's a. A good sidewalk and and I kind of good and ones I thought were dangerous and like there's a good one where you have. Lots of weight and see how the. The parkway there, they had the brewery had put the bushes there because the city wanted it there. And and if you just flip flop that and that's what our our gain is here, try to put the. You know, and get landscaping on the inside and give you a good clean sidewalk. And then we don't end up with all, you look around the. Different places down there, you'll see all kinds of configurations, so. I think this is gonna standardize it so we can get a nice sidewalk. And if trees go and and try to take the. The load off the city and have the trees that that goes back into the into the uh. Property owners and you know, I mean. That's my whole thing is safety and having a, you know, minimal landscape to uh. You know, to make it, you don't want to make it look like all concrete, but on the other hand, it is a business park and it isn't gonna be. You know, sorry, so that's kind of gist of it, I just. Wanted to let you know that I'm uh here to support. Staff and and everybody, so. If there's any questions, I.
Thank, thank you, Gary, and I apologize, I did not warn you about the three minute, so I I apologize.
Can you stay, can you stay up there? We can we ask him questions?
Uh, sure, we can ask some questions.
Okay, so. Gary, if you don't mind going back to that slide with the sidewalk.
Mm hmm.
The. You're advocating. The landscape. He on the property. So in in board of the public pride award.
And that's what Chris and I have had long discussions on how you do this. Because some places the property line and buildings right up against, you don't have the the distance, he was calling out ten feet. And that's not gonna work, you're gonna have to plant a tree in a building, you know, because it it isn't gonna work in places. So I've walked the area and I actually. Done it recently. And taken pictures of every area and I said, how can we get something that works through the whole place without tearing up everything? And as somebody pulls a permit to do something, well, then that the city would say, okay, let's do the sidewalk this way. And my my proposal, like you see there with the grass on the inside, you get out of your car and you step in that mess right there. So if you flip flop it basically and put the grass and maybe that cause you're eight feet from the curb is where the city property goes. So basically you're flip flopping, you got a forty inch, forty eight inch driveway or sidewalk. Then you have that. Two foot area that. Is part of the city. And then that could be incorporated with some of the property on the owner. To make a planter box or a tree or whatever might, you know, fit in this, you know. With the decor or whatever building they're doing, so that's my vision of seeing it, and I think that's what. Uh, Chris is trying to achieve there, it's it's not a. And not one paintbrush is gonna do it all, but that's, I think that's the closest thing I can see. You know, get street lights, you know, we have those palm trees and even staff is recommended. It just pulls up the sidewalk, it makes it dangerous, they're messy trees. How can we get landscaping minimal, give us, you know? And that's what I'm proposed, you know.
Okay, thank you.
So that help?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Our next speaker is Larry Culbertson. And after that, Mike. Gentile.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Larry Culbertson and I'm here represent representing the Historical Society for the uh. Uh, part of this issue, the expansion of the architectural overlay. But I would like to comment on the Los Molinos part of the. Of the project, which is the vast majority of it. Uh, I'm not a property owner in that area, but I've been. A a shopper down there, a customer down there for forty two years. And uh, it's looked a little bit rough over the years, but it's been improving. And in my reading of this project, it looks like what what's being proposed will really go a long way to make it look even better. So I hope you can support it. The um. The part of the proposed amendments that the Historical Society is most interested in. Is the expansion of the architectural overlay. Page nine of the report is a map of the architectural overlay showing the proposed expansion. It looks like about a hundred and fifty parcels. Uh, it would have been good to have included these parcels when the overlay was first established. But it's better to do it now than than never. It would also be interesting to know which of those properties, which of those hundred and fifty were remodeled over the years. And did not get the Spanish colonial revival architecture that they will get once they're uh they're included. I'm also curious if all the property owners in the proposed expansion were noticed. And was there any opposition? Uh, my only complaint with the expansion of the architectural overlay is it should have been bigger. Uh, there should be a spur going down El Portal. Uh, Avenue de Oregon and Avenue de Poniente. All the way to Plaza Plaza Park and the school. Um, maybe another little spur down uh Esplanade, that was the historic bridle trail. But I guess that would be for another day. So I believe that the report provides what is needed to make the findings to approve this project, so please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, followed by Mark McGuire.
Hello, everybody, uh, I'm the owner of a thirteen fifteen North El Camino Real. Uh, my building and another at thirteen oh seven North El Camino Real. Are one of the locations with entrances at North El Camino Real that slope downward. Two and are also on Caie Valley in the Los Molinos District. Um, for some reason, we were excluded from the architectural overlay mapping. Um, associated with the zoning ordinance seventeen fifty six twenty. Um, that would allow us to use Spanish architecture for the new development on the front on El Camino. Um, and uh, and then use the Los Molinos design guidelines uh on the back. So. I really believe that that my building and and that of my neighbor are highly significant to the surf culture of the area. Uh, the location at thirteen oh seven is still known as a a major uh board repair outlet today, my location. Is known as uh being really one of the first surf shops in the West Pico Corridor, um, which was started by Dale Velzy. Who owned the building at the time in the nineteen fifties. Um, Velzy's credited with opening the first surf shop of any kinds, uh, a little farther north prior to this location. Um, is the inventor of the pig longboard as well as countless other shaping and marketing innovations. Um, he's in the Surfing Hall of Fame and is greatly recognized in the Surf Heritage Museum in San Clemente. Um, Velzy also gave start to Bruce Brown's film career um through buy through buying him his first camera. And through letting him film and show early screenings of movies within my building. Uh, my location is featured in one of his first movies Slippery and Wet, um, that included scenes with Henry Ford. Brown later went on to produce Endless Summer and numerous other legendary works and was recently recognized with pieces in the Smithsonian. Brown's entire work collection and other artifacts are also greatly recognized uh within the Surf Heritage Museum in San Clemente as well. So as a result of these considerations, I really think that our locations are as closely tied to the surf culture of San Clemente as is possible. Um. And as a result, we would like to be included in the architectural overlay, um, so that we can represent it on that backside. Um, also, I I just saw that really we're not in any of the plans of Los Molinos and I think that's probably something. Um, uh, uh, that we should look look at. Um, so really what we would like to do is be able to be included in that overlay so that we can really do that and reflects. Uh, reflect the the culture of the building and what we're really trying to do in that area. Um, thanks for your time and in trying to help ensure that we can maintain the culture and history of this great area. And I also, it's the first time I looked at this general plan, but I'm not really clear why we weren't. Why this, those, those buildings are just completely left out of it, especially, you know, mine um with where we're trying to go. Um, because of the reasons that I said, I mean, it doesn't get much more related to surf culture is 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 my location.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Can for as a as a question? Can you please give me those addresses again of of your building and that of your neighbor, what you think would be appropriate to add in?
Maybe he could show us on the map.
Yeah, um. Chris, can you? For for our benefit relative to his comment, can you show us on a exhibit or something? What he's talking about?
Four locations to the right of the breath. The lines, the second one, moving from left to right. I mean, really, those problems should also be mixed use, I think that's what both of them are as well, but that's either here or there. Those four against the white.
At the very bottom. See how the.
Down here?
Which four? Okay. And 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 there's a point of clarification, are you suggesting that that should have? Like the Spanish colonial revival requirement in the front, but down in the backside. The Los Molinos design standards, okay? Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mike?
Well, can we see that diagram that showed that where it was split?
Yeah.
It showed the yellow. On El Camino Real. And how does that relate to?
There you go, that one.
Mm hmm, so is that what you're talking about there?
Yeah, just basically this whole thing, we're not necessarily included in that.
Yeah, we're. We're just not included in really any of this, and I I think that. These locations are kind of in the spirit of that. District. So I mean, we're just talking about the the architectural overlay. But I also think that those should probably.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike, appreciate it. Mark McGuire.
Uh, good evening Chairman McCann and members of the commission, I. I'll start by saying, uh, congra, thank you. Host Chairman Crandall for your years as the chairman, first time I'm seeing you. On the side over there, you're now less relevant to me, no. Uh, and welcome, uh, Chairman McCann. Uh, I just wanna, um, I I'm. Speaking as to those three red parcels, I represent two of the owner of two of those parcels, if you go back to that exhibit, Chris, that you just had. That uh showed showed those um parcels in there, it's it's. Uh, mixed use over a light industrial mixed use overlay. And I want to thank Chris for making changes. Most of those changes are clarifying to be consistent with the intent of the general plan in terms of the maximum FAR that's allowed to be consistent with the general plan. And to make clear that the existing uses are legal conforming uses, not legal nonconforming uses. And then there were some technical and detailed um changes that Chris was kind enough to dig in with me on. How can you make those properties? Ultimately, um. Convert from the light industrial uses that are there and have been there for a long time. I, a group that I was part of purchased those properties in two thousand and three and worked on a mixed use project in the middle of. Of that decade. Um, and then sold it uh when the recession hit in two thousand and eight. And um, so it's a long time coming to bring some of those areas to life. It just takes a long time, we all know that. Um, and with the um adjustments that were made. Uh, in Chris's errata, I feel like the it gives it the best chance to um over time convert to the mixed use that that'll be. Really attractive and I just put for, you know. Curiosity's sake, if you're interested, that that was the project that we were working on. The way that project worked was we had the empty lot next to Shade Tree and a little office building next to Shade Tree that also has the driveway down. To the self storage. And we had a mixed use project that. Um, had all the parking at a lower level, twelve feet below the street level. And then the buildings were on top of that, um, and it was mixed use with the commercial on the front. Um, along El Camino Real and then residential in the back that um. It's the type of thing that I think can work in the future. And these current owners, they now have assembled one additional key parcel, which is one oh eight Lago, which is another one point four acres and. With that parcel. Combined with these that they purchased from us, uh, they really have an opportunity at some point in the future to do a great project. So I'm here to answer any questions if there are any, but I just want to thank Chris for the changes that he made, I think they're all. Perfect and I'm very happy with it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on? This item? Okay. Seeing none, um. Relative to the commission. There's a lot to chew through here. Um, I think I'd like to. Take Chris's suggestion and. Just kind of go through it in a segmented way, like what do we have in tab one or chapter one or whatever? Um, unless there's, which I think we should proceed that way, unless there's. Some kind of big picture questions or issues that someone wants to dig in at the beginning. Does anybody have anything like that?
So you're suggesting that we're gonna. We're gonna go through this document?
Well, what I'm, we're not gonna read it. I'm suggesting I'm gonna say, okay, does anybody have? Any, any uh comments? Relative to. You know, the general. The the. You know. Chapter one or chapter two or. Section five or whatever, I mean, are just. Do we want to do that or do you guys have a lot of comments?
I think the best thing probably. When I read through this and. Is we go basically follow. Chris's format. Uh, do the general plan. First. Um, because everything tails off of that. And it's general. Um, the maps and all. Uh. Are detailed. But uh, we start with that and then go down to specific plan amendment and. It might keep civil rather than trying to talk about all of them. How they inter intertwine, I mean.
Yeah, I like that, I like that as an approach. But I think I'm guessing. Hopefully everyone here has reviewed. Documents, so the the plan is to hit. Each section and see if there's any. Comments about that.
Exactly, and if no one has comments, we move on to the next one.
Okay. Before you do that, um, excuse me. Chairman McCann, uh, uh, before moving on, uh, you you have the opportunity to close the public hearing. Uh, portion since the public has made their comments.
Okay, so. I I can do that if you want. I also heard last time that you guys thought we should close it at the very end in case there's more questions. For the public or. But we can. Close the public hearing, no?
Um, for most applications. It it would be. Typically a quicker process, I believe, but in this case. Um, since we're going into deliberations. I think it's customary to close the public hearing.
Okay, see seeing that there's no additional public comment, we close the public hearing and. Bring it to commission deliberations. So with that being.
Hey, can I make a couple of comments?
Hey, can I make a couple of comments before we start? Um, with regard to the sidewalk issue, I'm assuming that that brewery, that's a fairly recent project where the landscape was installed adjacent to the street. But it's being proposed now that future projects, that's going to be shifted to the property, right? And the, and the concrete or the sidewalk is just going to be along the street. Is that, is that part of this, these guidelines, Chris?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a couple, uh, a little more to that. So there is eight feet of public right of way along Kai de los Molinos. We spoke with our public works department. And in discussion about their general plan policy, it says that there should be a defined street edge that's landscaped on Kai de los Molinos over time. Now, if you're doing minor projects, there's a lot less opportunity to add landscaping than if you're doing a redevelopment project. And we added text in this document, a whole subsection to, to discuss that. How efforts should be made where you can. We added provision in other ways I can get to if you have questions on it, but going to the sidewalk, our public work staff had commented that there should be four feet of we're, uh, distance between a street tree and the sidewalk. And the current location of these palm trees right at the curb are starting to disrupt the sidewalk. Uh, there is also business comments about wanting to have the sidewalk adjacent to the curb. So if you park, it's easier to get out of your car and go on the sidewalk. Um, also to perhaps make it a little easier and safer for pedestrian traffic considering big trucks go into this industrial area by having the sidewalk closer to the street is probably going to be more visible. So with six feet, six inches of curb, four feet of sidewalk, then you have three and a half feet of public property for landscaping. That's public property. Then depending upon the, the condition of the property, they'll either add landscaping where they can, if it's a minor project. If it's a new project, then they would add more than that.
But it would still be out of the public right of way. The new landscape for a major project. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, because there's three and a half feet of public property. So that would be landscaped, three and a half feet. And then beyond that, on the private parcel, there'd be additional landscaping.
Okay, and that's required in this document?
Yes, so, um, there's a design guideline that says there should be ten feet between the street and parking areas. And there should be landscaping between the street and structures with sufficient space so that there's at least four feet between a tree and the sidewalk, like our public work staff said. There's also, there's requirements for a certain amount of landscaping on the property. But what I just described is specific to where that street scene is, right? There's, there's more than one standard. That, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, but, um, they all work together.
Okay. I got a follow-up question on that. So to be clear, in this document, it's proposing to go curb, sidewalk, and then all landscaping from there on?
Yes.
So the brewery essentially didn't do that way.
They didn't do it that way based upon the specific plan.
At that point.
Direction we've been giving, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, I'd like that way.
And is there a, uh, maintenance component? If we're going to shift all the landscape onto the private property for the most part, that could be a concern.
The municipal code requires property owners to maintain landscaping, um, up to the curb currently. Uh, even maintaining curb and gutter. So the improvements in the right of way are currently, uh, their responsibility. It would remain the same.
Okay, the other question I had is real quick. Is that right?
Sure.
So the four parcels that, that this gentleman was referring to, is there any, you know, opportunity to, to look at those tonight or is that? I mean, he didn't bring it to planning, I'm assuming.
So, so, uh, this project was initiated, uh, by the city council. Um, uh, that is essentially where this, um, direction came from. They, this was not, uh, part of that uh, council initiation. Uh, there is an avenue for, uh, for making these types of changes in the future. However, it would be, uh, applicant initiated. If the, uh, planning commission would like to, um, include, uh, as part of a recommendation that the council consider those parcels. Uh, that could be something that staff would, could take to the city council. As part of this project moving forward. However, at this point in time, that the, uh, these were not part of the public's ability to review. Um, I'm sorry, not part of the public's, uh, review of the project that's before the planning commission right now.
So this, this gentleman understands and the process to try to get those added.
I'll have a comment on that. Can I?
Go ahead, Chris.
There's a, one of the properties that staff, uh, disagrees with including there. If there is support for this and the, the commission wants to make, in their motion, recommend the city council to include them. Staff doesn't recommend including the corner property because it's not functioning in SASS position in the same way as the other lots. Uh, it's a hotel. It doesn't, a, a big difference is that the property, when it slopes down, a good amount of where it slopes down is still visible at El North El Camino Real. So it's not like the other properties where they're tucked away more, they slope down and they're more directly facing Los Molinos. Uh, so that's, that's SASS. That's SASS position on that.
So to clarify, Adam, what you said is if, if it was the desire of this commission, we could make a motion to approve this and recommend that council consider adding those additional three or four parcels?
Yes, that would, um, that, that recommendation, um, would, could be considered by the council, but the, their inclusion as part of this project is not possible at this point.
Is it, was it possible before the council meeting or no?
I don't, I, I think we should have, um, so it could be before the council meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we dig in? Okay, um, with that, Commissioner Crandall, you suggested that we start with the general plan amendment. Where would, where would we find that in the binder? Or Chris? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not, not someone, Chris.
Sorry, Commissioner, Chair?
Yes.
What was your question? Sorry?
Uh, where would we find the general plan amendment if that's where, um, we want to start?
Yes, that is tab, section F on your tab. Page F two. It's the first map.
Okay, so it's really just the maps?
It is, just maps.
Okay.
And these, these changes are to make the land use change and expand the architectural overlay district.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on these maps in the section now? Okay. Moving on to tab G, the, uh, specific plan. I guess I sug- you're suggesting we look at this, you know, chapter by chapter and see who has comments on.
Yes, my chapter. And then I would include that if you have questions or comments on the errata, you want to go through those, I can put them on the screen again.
Well, I think we, why don't we do that at the end unless someone is smart enough to incorporate it in the right spot on the fly?
Sure.
More power to them.
Okay.
I'm not. Um, okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions or suggested changes in chapter one?
We talking about specific line?
Yeah, in, in section G, tab G of the.
And, and I'll just, uh, just to help, chapter one is the introduction. So I'll kind of give you, it's the, the purpose and objectives describing the West Pico corridor area, including the Los Molinos focus area, what the general plan designations and overlays are and the existing land uses. And, uh, how this specific plan relates to other documents and the history of planning efforts for the area. That's chapter one.
Not seeing any.
My only question is how we want to add. Isn't this where we would add? But for those four properties because of the overlay zone?
So the way.
Or is this just for architecture?
You, you have exhibits with the boundaries in that section, right?
I'm wondering if it's not easier just to come along with a whole different amendment after all this is done? And add them to it.
Relative to those ones that are requested. I, I think we just handle that as a, as a separate discussion item. And then, because that's undoubtedly applicable.
Yeah, staff's recommendation would be that the, the four properties be addressed as a separate item and a general statement, uh, if this is the commission's desire to, uh, move forward with that recommendation is that the documents pertaining or relating to those four, uh, parcels be updated to reflect the, uh, planning commission's, uh, recommendation.
Yeah.
And that can be done in one motion at the end, but if we go through chapter by chapter and just identify the, uh, the issue, the, any, uh, concerns or questions or clarifications that the commission would like based on staff's, staff's proposal at this time. That would probably be the most expeditious way to.
And that makes sense to me actually because if, 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 if it's the commission's desire to do that, that's going to filter into all the chapters, I'm sure, and all the, all the maps and exhibits, so.
I wonder, I wonder if this is a legal question. Since those four properties are technically on our agenda. How does that work out with, you know, because there, those four properties are not on our agenda. They're just on a map. And somebody wants to bring them into the area, but it hasn't been agendized that those four properties are involved.
So we'll have Mal come over and.
I guess one, one thing that, that's a great point, Commissioner. One thing to keep in mind that maybe Mal will weigh in on this is we're only recommending to council. You know, we're not actually approving or disproving anything. We're just making a recommendation.
That's exactly right. This is a recommendation to council. So you can add things based on public comment, um, that are, that pertain to what has been agendized. This is, but, but this is a recommendation to council. If we were approving this and we could not approve those things that are added tonight, but you can certainly add it to the list of issues to be considered by council. There's no issue with that at all.
Okay, thank you. That's a great point. Okay, so I, I, I would suggest if we're all in agreement or a majority of a certain agreement to, to talk about the potential recommendation of an ad at the end.
I just have a question about, um, figure one, one dash four. You know, so what page is it? G twenty-three. But like, so you see on the right-hand side where you got the little red right there? And it's, it's carved out all those, those buildings, like I guess, like towards us that are still in gray there?
Yes.
Or why, why did that get carved out like that? I'm just curious.
Those are part of North Beach. So there's a North Beach focus area in the general plan. And so those, they do have, uh, it was perceived to be a different area of, of focus with its own policies.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, and I guess I have one question before we dig in. Chris, relative to Gary Giacominis comments about, are you comfortable that his comments relative to sidewalks and landscaping kind of jive with what, with the way you've written it?
I do though, the one, the one item that I suggested Gary to ask the commission about, and it's not in the errata, is regarding um, whether to have eight feet versus ten feet. So it is important that there would be enough landscaping on the private parcels to support street trees. That, that's important. So that would, calculating that out, that means there needs to be at least eight feet of landscaping between the street and parking areas and buildings. So to support street trees when they're required for new development. Uh, that would be the minimum staff would recommend. So if there is interest in doing that, we would, I would suggest making an adjustment to a couple other pages. Um, but I, I wanted to defer, I, I wanted that to come from Gary and, and assess whether there was support for that.
And, and how many feet were you? Do, does the document show or reflect right now?
I have ten feet based on what's in the zoning ordinance. So eight feet would be less than the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And could the eight, the eight feet presumably is among other things, so that a root ball down there for street tree won't be ruining sidewalks and parking areas? Is that accurate?
That's right. So the, the, the key consideration is the total landscaped area. And we recognize on Kai de los Molinos, that's where most of the street trees are going to be installed over time.
Okay.
And there's three and a half feet of public property for landscaping. And then there would need to be, what is that?
Four and a half?
Yeah, more landscaping on the private parcel.
Okay, so the eight feet, that was going to be my next question. The eight feet would include a portion in the public right of way.
Yes.
And then a, a, a smaller portion. So they would get credit for that portion in the public right of way.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I clarify?
Please.
This is, this is chapter three, by the way, landscaping. So you want to defer to that? Or do you want to just to keep?
I was, what I was going to say is let's, let's table that, uh, just like we are with the additional parcels till the end unless.
Because I think we can get into in chapter three.
Okay, okay, then bring it up in chapter three, please.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions in chapter one? Okay. Chapter two, um, the land use plan. Chris, is there anything you want to say about that? Does this where the vision statement is for you were talking about?
The vision statement for Los Molinos architecture, that's in chapter three.
Okay.
Chapter two is a description of the land use districts, the overlay districts, circulation, landscaping, grading, the public view corridor on Avenue de Pico and open space. It's, it's really a, a more detailed description of the specific plan area. That's the focus of chapter two.
Thank you. Does anybody have specific comments or questions? Looks like.
I, I have quite a few, actually.
Please.
All right. Uh, so first off, the, uh, starting on G thirty-one, these, uh, overlay districts, um, or zones. At a high level, um, I'm not going to highlight, let's go in order. G thirty-two, number three, mixed overlay. Uh, we've got a mixed overlay that we want to apply to the Cali Largo parcels and the sixteen twenty-three North El Camino Real. But you've got here for properties existing, industrial uses may continue unless there is a change of use or industrial uses are discontinued for more than one year. Can you explain discontinued for more than one year? What I'm concerned about is a taking. If somehow that we don't want to do a taking of their rights because the city deems them as not active. So can you define this a little bit better?
Yeah, this is the subject of one of the errata.
Okay.
So the errata changes that text. So the errata changes that text accordingly here.
Eliminates that?
That now it's it changes the wording. It says for these properties, existing industrial uses may continue until there is zoning approval and building permits are issued for the development of a commercial or mixed-use project according to standards and permitted uses in this section.
That that addresses my concern. Okay, great. The next one is number, I'm just going to move along because I have too many
Yep.
comments, so I want to be quick. Number four is the North Beach parking overlay on the same parcels on Cali Largo and sixteen twenty-three North El Comino Real. What is a North Beach parking overlay?
The North Beach parking overlay is in some ways, it it there was a parking study done to assess public parking in a district. And there is a commercial district and a residential district where if you meet criteria, you qualify for reduced parking rates. So similar to the downtown, if you have, there's different provisions, if you built them into a project like, let's say if it's bike, I think it's bike parking or uh, like golf cart parking, those sort of vehicles, then you can qualify for those reduced rates.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's great. Next one is number five, the professional business overlay. Here we're talking about the Pico Plaza. And I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe you can expand on where the interest to make Pico Plaza to incentivize through a bonus, a density bonus, small colleges and university institutional uses. Can you explain what the purpose of that is?
It came, it's in the general plan. The the so the changes we have in here are to mimic the general plan. And I wasn't part of drafting that
Okay.
in the G pack meetings, but my understanding is that the area is very, it's underutilized. If you look at the scope of the area, there's a lot of open parking. And it was discussed of whether to increase the density jet for any type of use. And instead, the outcome was to uh, incentivize certain types of development with this density bonus. And the density bonus is tied to the uses you described. If you do a master plan, this specific plan would explain what is the the, not a master plan, but what do you have to give to the city to even qualify? Right? What what sort of application would you have to give us? It it lists some items instead of being so ambiguous, give us a master plan. So that's what we try to do here.
Yeah, I guess it's a little out of our scope or our lane to comment on the wisdom of the general plan indicating this, but I don't think it's a good idea. Uh, retail is very important to the city's economic vitality and to start displacing retail with institutional uses just because of the plaza itself is maybe not doing well, I seems like a mistake. Uh, but, you know, I guess I'll stay in my lane and not make a change on that, but I just was questioning it because it doesn't make sense. The other thing is I wanted to say the visitor-serving commercial district overlay, I think is a great idea. I'm glad to see it's in there. Uh, the next thing I had was on the affordable housing, so that is, how does that interact with this plan? This this affordable housing program?
This is just a description of the types of affordable housing requirements that apply. Just generally, yeah, this is used in other specific plans.
Okay. Then on G forty-three is a figure two dash six bikeways. And is this just a reflection of the current general plan, Christopher, or is this something new? And what I'm getting at on these, on this, the bikeways diagram, figure two dash six is there is called out on El Camino Real a class two bike trail, which is an on-street bike trail, which doesn't exist today. Would be pretty scary to put an on-street bike trail on that street. So what is this designation? Is this just part of the general plan and it's just in here for consistency? Or is this something being proposed new?
It's simply, it is part of the general plan in a way. So when the general plan was adopted, it was done so with a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And that master plan is referenced in the mobility element. So they're they're intertwined and were adopted the same evening. So this document for the plan bikeways is consistent with that master plan.
Okay, but we're not, we're not introducing it here, it's just part of what's been there all along.
Correct.
Okay. Good, that was just a concern. That's, that's all my comments on chapter two, thanks.
No problem.
Try to keep it brief.
No problem.
On that, on that figure two-six, or that? It says proposed and it says existing. What's the difference between that and the legend?
Yes, the existing are bikeways that have already been implemented. Uh, I updated this with our public work staff.
Got it. Okay.
We have implemented a number of bikeways in the master plan, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions in chapter two? Okay, moving on. Chapter three. The design guidelines. You want to say anything about this, Chris?
Chapter three. Uh, and a big component of this is to establish those design districts. I had that map that, I mean, it's a page G forty-eight. And it establishes these design districts based upon policies in the general plan, including the Los Molinos Design District, where much of the discussion was on this project with Los Molinos businesses to craft that vision statement. And then I I shall also note that we added design guidelines that were carefully crafted for the Pierbowl specific plan on Spanish Colonial Revival Architecture. And then we took good content from the Talega specific plan as a number of design guidelines for other Spanish, like Monterey and Mission, uh, to account for El Comino Real. Uh, that this is more of a complete chapter to address the different districts in that specific plan.
Awesome, thank you.
Let me jump in on that.
Please.
Um, so these other types of Spanish architecture, do you have any examples, even if they're existing buildings within San Clemente? Um, on, and I know you describe them, you describe the style. But I know that was to try and cover some existing buildings that are not Spanish colonial revival.
No, we don't have Monterey or Mediterranean or traditional Mission on El Comino Real. We do have subdivisions in Talega where the specific plan there accommodated different types of Spanish. And there's some homes that have variations of these traditional forms. And the guidelines were well-written enough that I thought they they benefited this this document.
Okay, so the idea with that is to allow some flexibility.
Yes.
If it's still compatible.
And that's in the general plan. There's a policy that says between the North Beach area and the downtown, between the downtown and the El Comino Real interchange, Spanish generally of some true traditional kind is required.
But that's not in the Spanish Colonial Revival area.
Correct. The Spanish Colonial Revival has its a lot more detailed guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
On chapter three?
On chapter three.
Um, so when you talk about the parking lot buffering, it says five feet between each property. Is that right? So it's on page G fifty-six. Be be like two, be two.
Uh, it's parking lot buffering?
Yes. Yes, on G fifty-six.
G fifty-six, okay. Okay, got it. Uh. Yeah, that is not modified. I didn't, there's no amendments proposed for that.
It's like two and a half feet feet per property owner. That would that would net out to. Alright.
If there's a shared driveway.
Right, right.
Okay, any other comments or questions on chapter three?
Maybe.
When is he done?
Did you say maybe?
Yeah, I'm kind of scanning through my little tabs right here.
Okay, let's go to a question across, and then we'll we'll check with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on, um, G sixty-one, there's some important stuff here at the top, sidewalk width and design. Uh, Cali dot day Los Molinos is the main collector street through the Los Molinos industrial area. That's an important thing. In fact, the general plan thought it was so important. I didn't bring that page, I didn't bring it. But in the general plan, it calls Cali dot day Los Molinos a living street. It's called out. And essentially what that means, it's a pedestrian-oriented street. So to me, what Mr. Giacometi was talking about is exactly right. This, and I'll read it right here, provides pedestrian linkages for employees of the industrial area to reach North Beach Village and/or Pico Community Commercial Area. And, um, what Christopher Wright was talking about is the public right of way is approximately eight feet. And I think that's enough. If there's, you know, it that I, that's what I'm going to support is that eight feet. And the idea is you have curb, that's six inches, you have the sidewalk, that's four feet, so that's four and a half right there. So that leaves three and a half for public right-of-way landscaping, three and a half feet. If there's more room and the develop and the property owner wants to put landscaping there, that's great. But I don't think we should be mandating more. In fact, if you look at those pictures that Gary put up on his PowerPoint, there's barely four or five feet, period. There's not eight feet, there's like four feet most times. So I think that area is very hard-pressed. Uh, so that's where I'm, I just wanted to cite this now so that when I bring this back later, you, we're all, we all understand the intent of this is a pedestrian linkage of this um, for all the employees to walk around at lunchtime. And now that we have a lot more visitor-oriented businesses, it's the same thing. And you do notice people hitting their car door on the trees. You do notice people parking weird so they don't have to step in the mud because there's that immediate landscape there. So, um, I just wanted to point that out, that's where this lives, I think that's important. The other part is the shade trees. Uh, I, I'm not a, I'm not a landscaped architect, so I Googled what a Western rosebud tree is. That tree is a mess. It might be beautiful. It's pretty, but it drops, it drops little petals all over the place. Even in the Google search, it shows a whole bunch of stuff on the ground. Um, and the magnolia, again, it's in that little gem magnolia, those are beautiful trees. Uh, but again, maybe against the building, that would be cool. But not on the parkway, that we can't have trees in the parkway anymore. So I think we need to be mindful that we need low maintenance. And if you look at Los Molinos in general, uh, it's not necessarily the best maintained, you know, part of town. And if you ask some of the business owners, they're like, oh, isn't the city going to come and clean this up? I didn't know I had to do that. So there is some confusions in that, in that district, who's responsible for what? Those palm trees, the city planted them. So those business owners, you talked to them like, yeah, I was here twenty years ago when they were planted by Rod's Tree Planting Service. Why would I maintain that? The city put them in. So we have some, there's, as a practical matter, there's some challenges requiring the business owners to go out and clean that up. And so to that end, it's kind of out of our lane and out of our scope, but you know, when I attended the Los Molinos community, uh, meetings, I suggested to them that they take a look at their area and try and you know, come together as a team and say what they want to clean up and ask the city what they're going to do and work together to kind of address that, but it is an issue. So, um, I do think it's important that we pull that stuff off of the curb and push it back.
Can I respond to?
Yeah.
So it says approximately eight feet of public right.
Mm-hmm.
So that's exclusive of of private property, which is also fronting the building. You got that, right? And that's so that's more, that get, you know, ten feet, talking about ten feet. And there's still four, you know, and and again, it's an approximate. Because that thing's in a
Yeah.
all the way along. So I mean, I think the eight feet should be adequate for just talking about public right.
That's what I think.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, secondly, the, I'm sorry.
Wait, a question, but I'll save it.
Uh, the Western red, red rosebud, sorry. That's a native, that is a California native tree. They grow really well. They're not as bad as, uh, Tipuana or Jacaranda, or a lot of others, but if you do a deciduous tree, it's going to drop. I mean, that's what they do.
Yeah.
It's better than the pine needles and
Yeah.
I mean, the Western red, but you get the little pink flowers, you know, you've got the nice. To me, I think it's a good, it's a better tree.
Yeah, that, yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so regarding the species of trees, we worked with our contract landscape architects, Pat Murphy and Associates, on the Pierbowl Civic Plan and came up with a quite a list, uh, tree packet to consider when we updated that plan. And we revisited that for this document. Uh, there was support by the businesses to be primarily California native. That's in fact, one of the general plan policies to be native where we could. And there's a lot of considerations for picking street trees, like the right-of-way, um, maintenance. How well has it done in the community? Is it native? Is it drought tolerant? And that's how we came to pick these trees.
Thank you.
Sure.
I I have a clarif- clarification question for both of you two guys. You guys seem to be on the same page about eight feet. Are you talking about eight foot? I thought Cameron said you didn't want more than three-foot landscape. You you think that's adequate? But then I, you said, oh, eight feet, yeah. So what do we?
Eight total from the curb, from the street. Yeah, so you got six-inch curb, four, four feet, so that four feet sidewalk, so right there's four and a half.
Right.
So the three and a half plus the four and a half is the eight total.
So the four and a half on private property?
The four and a half is public right of, the four and a half is public right of, because six inches is curb.
No, I understand that. So what we're talking about, the the public right-of-way, we can't change where that is. It is eight feet, more or less. Proposed six-inch curb, four-foot straightaway, and then three and a half feet of landscaping. Chris has said that in order to have adequate, if we do want to have street trees along there, eight-foot minimum, so it would be the three and a half feet in the public right-of-way plus then four and a half feet on private property for a total of eight-foot landscape width there, that would, that that their suggestion would be a minimum for street trees. So on my question is, are you in favor of that eight-foot total?
No.
You, you don't, you only want to see the three and a half foot strip in the public right-of-way?
The eight feet total, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now, it's not eight feet of landscaping, eight feet of public right-of-way.
Yeah.
That is what, we're not voting on if there should be eight-foot feet of public right-of-way or not. It it is there.
Right.
So the question is, how do we use, do we eight-foot a sidewalk, eight-foot landscaping, or or mix, whatever?
Yeah, I'm saying six-inch curb, four-inch, four-feet sidewalk, three and a half feet landscape.
Okay. But there there, hang on one second, one second. There's a follow-on issue. It sounds like you're against, I just want to clarify and make sure of in addition to that, what's in the public right-of-way, now asking if someone redevelops to have four and a half feet additional on private property for landscaping, so that we can ask them to put street trees along there and it'll have adequate space for the street trees. So am I correct in hearing that you're against any landscaping requirement on private property? any landscaping requirement on private property? Is that what you're saying?
As a requirement, yeah, it could be optional, but I, I don't think we should be requiring it.
Okay, thank you. Is that what you were agreeing to? Okay, so what are you saying?
I'm saying that it's reasonable to require landscape. And I think that's what the gentleman Gary was, was suggesting that we don't have the landscape requirement within the public right. In some cases for new development, that we allow the sidewalk to run right up to the curb.
Yeah, no, he clearly wanted the sidewalk against the curb.
Yeah.
So then if there's extra space, it would be landscaping or DG or more paving or more sidewalk or something.
Yes, I mean, that's minors.
Yeah.
We want to make this, and you even mentioned that, that there needs to be a linkage, pedestrian linkage, which is walking.
Yeah.
So it's safe for people to park, and gather car, and for people to pass by.
Correct.
Um, so you're gonna need that eight feet, and then in order for that to work, and maybe I'm misreading this. You do, we do need to require some landscaping adjacent to the build. But we're pushing it onto the private property.
Yeah, I just don't, I just think if you look the air, if you walk the area a lot, if you barely have the four feet and then you have a building, there. So if you had somebody that wants to to redevelop, you'd be saying you're gonna, we need you to lose some building space. Now, there are plenty of examples where people have put succulents right on the wall of their building. And you know what? That's good enough for me.
Yeah, I think Chris, Chris has one.
To say, to say you need to cough up four more, four to eight feet, that's what I'm saying, I think is excessive. Especially when they can do uh landscaping on their building or do a planter box. Because it's an industrial area, we don't need it to be Del Mar. That, that's what I'm trying to get at.
So I just want to m- make a point of emphasis that there is a lot of discussion with Los Molinos businesses about this. And to address it, there's on page G sixty two. And there's text in here to make it clear that when you're in the conditions that Commissioner Cosgrove describes, that exists where there's no space for landscaping. You don't have to put landscaping in. If you can't, if you can't make it work, you can't make it work. So we built in provisions for vertical landscaping so that you can soften it where you can. If you're just doing a minor project, like Los Molinos Brewery would fit into that. They weren't moving the building, they weren't doing an entire new site plan, they had to make it work with what they had. That would not have to have any street trees. They would not have to do any required, it's just what you can do. And the review authority, when you go to design review subcommittee and the planning commission or whatever, whatever body, depending on the type of project, they would consider that. That's part of the process. What, so that's kind of like a separate thing. What you see out there is different than what the street trees are about. That's if you're redeveloping the property, you're moving the buildings. There's, it, it's atypical in the city to not require any landscaping on private property. And even in the downtown, I, I processed a project that hopefully gets permitted soon, so's uh where it's a forty foot wide lot. And they had to have a ten foot landscape planner between the street and the parking lot. And area is very tight for parking. So uh, what the, what Gary was talking about in particular is ideally, they would like to reduce landscaping. So I'm just saying that if there's desire to reduce the landscaping, but not eliminate street trees on the street, then eight feet between the street and, what is it, eight feet between the street and parking areas is what staff suggests.
And is that how it's written in here now, or right now it says ten feet?
It says ten. If there's desire to do eight, then I can walk you through what changes you'd make.
Okay, but if are you saying also that that's not a hard requirement because there's, there's opportunity for flexibility with staff on a case by case basis, where they can provide vertical landscaping and other things to accomplish the goal. Is that, is that, is that how it's written?
Yeah, we, we purposely did not make it. If it's a design guideline currently, but the way we have it worded is to match the zoning code. So what I, if you, if there's desire to make it eight feet, we would, to make it clear that the specific plan has a different rule than the zoning code. So that's how specific plans work. It's in the civic plan, it overrules the zoning code. We would need to tweak a couple of things in addition to what we have given you, and I could walk you through that.
Okay, okay.
You have to look at not look at just each individual lot as a standard. Somebody could come in and buy an entire block. And we'd want, and it wouldn't be a, a big burden for them to provide additional landscaping and make it more uh pedestrian friendly. So we gotta make sure we don't short sell ourselves.
On, on something like that, yeah, yeah.
I, I would, for one, I would be supportive of shrinking that for, as written, from ten feet to eight feet.
Okay.
I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but I'm supportive of that. Particularly as long as there's flexibility with, on the city's part, on a case by case basis to say, okay, well, in this case, vertical landscaping is okay or whatever.
Yes.
Because there's a, there's a whole host of individual cases and specifics.
Air on the side of the, too much landscape.
Okay.
If there's flexibility, we just leave it at ten feet. And then they, that way, if they do buy a
We get more.
Yeah, we know that we're gonna get what we really.
Okay.
Because the small projects, they're not going to be able to do it.
We just need to have it written so the intent is there so that ten years from now, and Christopher may not be here, we're not, may not be here, the intent is there, so people have that flexibility. I just want to see over time the flexibility get iterated out, that's all.
Okay. Um, I would propose we take a a seven minute break. Is that good for people? I guess we'll keep plowing through.
I can keep.
Keep going, okay, let's keep going.
Good.
Try to be nice over here.
Yeah, I just wanted to, while I have the floor a little bit on number three, chapter three. This is where uh at design review, I um sat in the back and we talked, discussed about some of the building design, architecture and design standards. And there's uh some photos in here that uh Christopher pulled together. And I think this is what's really cool about what we're doing here, this part, chapter three. Um, the industrial look, the urban look, um all the, the textures with the, using the metal or other finishes. Uh, I just want to highlight that, that that's part of what the new Los, these new design guidelines would, would be. And I think they're great, and I think it sets this district apart. And we should just be aware that I think we're doing something unique and good to make this district vibrant and have an, its own identity that I think is really positive.
Now, with that, can we, can, has everybody looked at the, the little folded papers in here? And it kind of brings up a point to a chapter three comment I have um on, well, it's uh page G seventy seven. It talks about the walls. Now, I want to kind of look at these, the center folds, I guess you could say. Um, at the same time, we're kind of reading this where it says, avoid bright colors in har- um highly reflective wall surfaces. So if I'm looking at these the kind of the design here, there's some bright colors in there-ish. You know what I mean? It's not draft. So it's, well.
Well, I think it's like a metallic.
It's whatever that is, but it ain't, it, it, what it is not is drabish, right? You know what I mean? Like, it says, uh
Warmer tones or?
Yeah, war, it's not warmer tones, G seventy seven. It's not warmer tones. That's not warm tone. That's a popping tone.
Yeah, I, I kind, I kind of had a little issue with the colors also.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, kind of the same, you know, if we're looking, if we're thinking eclectic, um you know, at a minimum, like it says avoid bright colors. I, I don't, I don't think we need that. At, at a minimum, I think we could say that there's okay for use as an accent um color, because yeah, if it's eclectic and you, and you look at these photos, which I think are fantastic. And I think that um Commissioner Camp supplied a number of them. Um but, but you know, there's, there's murals and paintings and designs and things, and they're all not, you know, warmer tones. I mean, there's definitely pop here.
There's pop.
Um, so I don't want to go crazy on the bright colors, but I don't, I don't know that we need to be restrictive on colors at all.
We could kind of maybe fluorescent, like no fluorescent, like.
Way to do this, typically design guideline things. Extremely bright colors are discouraged, not uh, out ruled out, yeah, but they're discouraged, maybe.
And the word extremely is kind of key there. It could be purple. It's not extreme purple. You know what I mean? Like, so like, like, you know, maybe it's blue. Like, electric, electric.
So Chair McCann.
Please.
If we could, I, I think it would uh be of benefit for Chris to explain uh the, the, the review process for a, let's just say, a building to change its paint color only. And, and, and that will, I think, inform how these design guidelines actually become implemented.
Okay.
Uh, and what the discretionary requirements are.
Yeah, so when a, a business proposes to do a color change, then they would need to do a staff waiver. So that's a staff approval to review it. And then in the process doing that, we would look at what is the intended vision for the area. So we would look at this to get a sense of, are the colors anywhere close to what's intended down there, right? So if, like, for example, if it says, don't do green, right, and they want to do green, lime green, well, city shouldn't approve that, right? So the, this text is helpful to staff in those instances. Um, you know, I think, you know, my suggestion is if anything, to, the, the key text in here is highly reflective wall surfaces. Because there's emphasis in the vision statement for an indu- oh, of a larger category of industrial architecture, which includes corrugated metal. So if you have like corrugated metal with no finish on it or rust or anything, it's very bright. And that was something that we wanted to discourage that, and then also to encourage earth tones of some kind.
It, and I guess where I was um going with this uh description was that um changes that are minor in nature can be approved at a staff level if they are consistent with design guidelines. Because commercial properties require some type of design review uh prior to changes being made to a property. Um, if they do not comply, or it's, it's not clear whether they comply, then the uh staff waivers, which are approved by the city planner, cannot, will not be approved. That doesn't mean that they cannot have a bright lime green building. In, in the case of the co- of the text in front of you, it means that they would have to go through a discretionary process for that, which would include, depending on the, the scale of change, um but in the context of uh paint color change would be a um, a minor uh architectural permit or minor cultural heritage permit, which would be at the zoning administrator level, but would include design review by the designer of the subcommittee. So it's not, so the words like encourage, discourage, avoid, um, those, those are uh, they're not, they're not definitive that it's impossible to have them. It just means that if they, if, if the, if the request doesn't avoid those types of things, then it can't be approved at a staff waiver or staff level. It means it would go to a design. Um, it would go to a discretionary body with design review. If you want to be very specific and say no reflective colors, that's, that's a relatively easy one. Um, because reflectivity is something we can measure. Um, but bright colors, that, that is, that is something, where we're looking at these pictures, staff would identify some of these, these colors as bright. But there's a level of discretion that we want to avoid having staff make. And that is what is a bright color, because a bright color to some people would be a fluorescent color. Bright to other people would be any, any shade of yellow.
Right. My, my preference would, pert- it's personal, right? What, you know, the bright colors. I, look, I don't want the lime green building down there, more, anymore than anyone else does, okay? Um, but I think lime green could be a fine accent on some of these. So I mean, maybe you say, you know, unless there's accents. I agree completely with the highly reflective materials, by the way, because there's glare and and all that stuff. So I agree a hundred percent on that. I just think that there's, we don't have to say completely discour- or discouraged, but something about accents, okay. That'd be my preference, but I'm one vote out of seven, so.
I got a comment on that, sorry. You go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, again, it says a board.
Yeah.
And they do have the opportunity, if they're passionate about something, to say, look, we want this to go to the design review. And see if we can push it through, and it may be that it is appropriate. I mean, we're, it's rare that we're gonna want a metal, reflective metal. Like a galvanized, clear galvan. Because it's just, it's just so bright. But it could be that if it's a large development
Mm hmm.
That like you said, a lime green, for a certain application, I think, appropriate.
But, but I'd, I'd like to see.
I think it gives them some flexibility.
But if it said accents, okay, then it would give them flexibility at staff level. Just because somebody wants to paint his door electric blue, I don't think it should have to go to design room subcommittee. That's my opinion, but I'm one vote.
In addition to that, okay.
I was gonna say, I agree with how it's written, because if the staff and the applicant can't come together, then they can bring it to a designer review or planning commission. I mean, but I would think every applicant doesn't really want it to go beyond staff. So I think it's going to be solved. If it isn't, and if staff, if our, if, or if I hear a complaint, or city council has a complaint, then they're gonna, gonna come after staff and will change it. But I think this is a good start. That it gives them some teeth to say, you know, do you have any other ideas that this person really wants it? And it's so bad, then bring it to design review, or bring it to some.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole idea of the guidelines for this district was to intentionally be vague. To encourage creativity. But there are certain things that have to be reeled in at some point. I mean, we don't want a uh a mirrored storefront window eight by ten, that's gonna uh blind the drivers or whatever. And we can't build those in and identify every conceivable option or color.
Otherwise, you're gonna need.
So the best way is to leave the flexibility and the staff can't come to a uh decision on a color or something. They have a, basically a, call it an appeal option, but another level they can go to, which is zoning administrator or um design review to get what they want. And it's not too cumbersome a proj- uh process if they're really uh avid about doing a specific thing.
Okay.
So I, I got a comment. I, I mean, I don't know if you want to encourage um the earth tones. You really want to encourage earth tones? Or do you want to discourage earth tones? I think you just let them kind of do their thing to some degree, but when I read the word avoid, like I'm reading a can of something aerosol, avoid spraying in your eyes. I'm just not gonna do it. So when I, right, but when, when a, a guy, Joe Schmo is filing his permit, like I have no idea any of this stuff a year or two ago at all. So he's gonna follow what this says, just because he follows rules to some degree. He's not gonna push the envelope. That's gonna disrupt that creativity that's over there. So in, maybe instead of avoid, can the word discourage be better? And, and then you guys could enforce discourage, because if you say discourage, I'm like. Because if you say discourage, I'm like, okay, there's an option here. If you say avoid, it's a hard line to me.
My one follow on to that, and I don't want to make this all about color and I don't want to die on this hill either of color. But
Yeah.
In the future, staff is going to be reading this and future planning commissions and designer subcommittee members are going to be reading it and it says, avoid or discourage or whatever. And, and they'll say, okay, well, the authors thought we should avoid these colors, but even though it might look good. I mean, the, the pictures, which I think look great, definitely have accents at a minimum in different colors, so.
So staff is uh, is open to any suggestions that the commission might have to clarify uh, this language. That's, that's what we're here for. But um, what I would just recommend is that the, whatever language the commission uh, would like to land on, that it be relatively straightforward and not leave too much discretion. Um, too much open. Um, because if, if the language says something to the effect of um, you know, um, avoid highly reflective walls or surfaces, all colors are okay. Then when people come in, there's less chance that there, that anything would be at a discretionary level.
I have a suggestion.
When you give that much of a blanket, staff's not looking at this with eyes of, does that look good necessarily? We're looking at it as, does it meet our regulatory policy documents? That's, that's, that's what staff is doing. We're not subjectively reviewing how pretty is something.
But avoids them all.
Yeah. Chris, did you have a thought?
Yeah, uh, so this is the errata I'm showing on the screen. And you could see there's already edits staff was proposing to this. So first edit, we were already, the blue is new. So what I'm hearing is strike bright colors and, and I mean, of highly reflective wall surfaces, I, I, staff would suggest keeping it as a void. Uh, earth tones, I, her tones are pretty, I think, understandable. Like you don't see lo- um, fluorescent green in nature. So we kept, you know, I suggest keeping our tones, which is consistent with those pictures. There's dark grays, there's beiges, there's blues, there's a variety of thing. Uh, and, and if we want to even clarify further, you could say primary, you know, as primary colors, you know, versus accent colors. Like that could be done. And then the last thing is strike and warm light colors. That's, that's a change that we were suggested, so.
I'm one vote, right? Maybe my preference perfectly fine to say avoid highly reflective surfaces. Period. Avoid bright colors except as accents, except as accent colors or something like that. Period.
The wording I would say is reserve bright colors for accents.
Okay, that works for me.
Well, but if you look at the next sentence, it says colors should harmonize. So there's our, there's, I think we're getting too much into the minutia, but.
Harmonize and provide contrast.
No, no, it just says they should harmonize. So they have the ability to say, hey, look at, that color doesn't, this isn't really a harm, a harmonious palette. You know, we don't care for it. I think maybe instead of avoid, it should be discourage bright colors and avoid highly rela- you know, reflective wall surfaces and then just let it go. Because they have to make a judgment, does it harmonize and does it provide the contrast? And the, 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 you know? And if the applicant doesn't like it, because avoid doesn't mean you have to do it. I tell my kids to avoid stuff and they still do it. You know, I don't say shout, you know, like an officer, but I say avoid, you know, avoid speeding, but they still could speed. Cause I give them tickets.
Different.
No.
I don't avoid most things, but certain things.
Yeah, does it mean that they don't push it?
But avoid means it's a very can't do work. Do you not agree with that?
Then discourage.
I'm okay with something softer because like.
We're gonna have to develop a palette of colors.
Like our point is when we're all gone in twenty years, you'll still be here. But when, you know what I mean? Like.
People are just gonna read it. What is, I, I have a question.
Discourage and avoid, discourage bright colors and avoid.
What is, what does it mean? Colors shall harmonize and provide contrasts? Like the.
So a, a good.
Can it?
Absolutely.
So a good example, so a good example of our harmonious and contrasting colors would be a um, uh, historic uh, structure, um, Spanish colonial revival, white stucco walls and a um, like a robin's egg blue window trim.
Okay.
Those, that blue and the white contrast, but they, they, that color palette also harmonizes um, as a, as a whole.
Okay.
Well, I like the word discouraging. I think we just.
I prefer the, to avoid.
Yeah.
I'm a discourage.
Okay.
So what about highly reflect?
Flexibility and.
Okay, so.
What about harmonize? I mean, we could argue about harmonize too. You look at uh, any paint chip thing and you're gonna see a white, there's twenty kinds of white. And they'll go all the way down to a, a bright color or relatively bright. But they're all in the same palette. They're all harmonious with each other.
Uh, it sounds like there's sort of a consensus to change the word avoid to discourage.
So uh,
I've tracked it on the screen.
Yeah.
So you could see what I.
Yes, yeah, we're taking notes along the way of, of proposed changes, which um, there haven't been too many.
Right.
We can touch on all of these as we, as we go. If the uh, commission would rather dial them in, that's of course your option, but we, we, we can address all of these at the, at the end in one, in one motion.
Okay, yeah, but yeah, it sounds like kind of beating it up a while. We kind of settled on discourages.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Can I ask, what I have here on the screen, is that, is that what?
That works.
That's all.
Yeah, that works for me.
Perfect.
All I have to do is leave them for good.
So.
We voted on it already.
So the idea behind the errata is that if these changes that are before you, you know, in your motion, you could just ex- uh, adopt the errata with resolution. So uh, as we, if changes are made to the errata, uh, staff would suggest just marking them on your page. So um, or I can come up with the version that's marked up and we could give it to the chair at the end.
If, if, if you're um, modifying the version of the errata that you went through line by line, uh, with, for the public's benefit earlier, are you modifying that document now?
Yes.
Okay, so let's keep doing that. Um, we can keep it on the screen. At the very end, we will go through, check off all the changes that were made, at least as far as that document's concerned. If there are any others to things like maps, we can address those in a, a separate motion.
Okay, I'd also just like to point out for the record that we ended up settling what Commissioner Crandall said fifteen minutes ago, which was change avoid to discourage.
That's right.
So, okay, I think we picked that one up.
Try to avoid that.
Progress.
Um, Commissioner Davis, chapter three comments?
Again, I got a question like, so what is a property setback off the street for these buildings that they have there? Like, you know what I mean? If you're building the fifteen feet?
No, there's no required setback.
You could be on property line?
You can.
Got it. So that's where the eight D really comes more in play.
Yeah, it's, it's uh, purposely a, a design guideline versus a requirement. So you have that flexibility.
Okay, thank you. And then what about any thoughts on, on the brewery? Like, are you gonna tie in? Forget that. It's, it's something later to deal with.
Are, are you speaking about the landscaping that's there?
Yeah, and, and those guys just put in the sidewalk with nice, you know?
Yeah.
Like, and then we're flip flopping it on them.
True, um, that, but that's how changes often occur, that somebody's most recent project will be affected by.
That's true.
Um, and the goal is. Yes, and, and so the goal over time is to um, make properties um, or public right of way in front of properties conforming to the current standards. As things develop over time, it would, it would be changed to.
Just how it is, nature of it. Okay, thank you. Uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with other chapter three comments or questions? Okay. Chapter four, comments or questions? Chapter five, comments or questions on development standards? This, I guess I have a question, but this uh, um, like the mixture standards, is that where the revisions were in the errata relative to the, the parcels that Mr. McGuire was talking about?
Mostly. There, there are some in chapter two as well. So yeah, I have them all covered in the errata.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone, chapter five? Okay. Yeah, chapter six, administration. Okay.
Something I want to point out.
Please.
For um, there was a section in here, Christopher, about um, the area ID for new, for new developments, which I think is a great idea. Can you point out where that is? I don't know if you guys noticed that?
The project identification?
Uh, you know, to, to identify the fact that it's in this, it's that surf, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can call that out. That's chapter three.
Okay, I don't know if you guys noticed.
What is that?
Uh, let me, I'll find the page. So this is, this, this addition was informed by talking to the businesses.
Not, not talking about signage, are you?
No, um, can't remember how it was words.
There is a sign, a mention of us here. Here we go. Page G fifty-seven.
Where we looking at?
So there, there is an addition of district identification signs. Overhead or monument signage to identify the Los Molinos district at entries on Caide de los Molinos is encouraged.
Mm-hmm. So that, is that a city produced sign?
It can be. It could be in partnership with the businesses. It's more than likely would be in the public right of way, but it would be a collaborative effort to, to have the design reflect the area.
That would be super cool. So who's gonna come up with that design?
Well, no, it's gonna be, could be unique, certain each property. That's a question I have too, is how do we review that?
That.
quiring.
Yeah, no, that would be like you're driving up, you're, like you're driving into Los Molinos from Avenue to Pico. And there's a monument sign that says Los Molinos District or an overhead sign.
Like a welcome to or like Marvel.
They got him a Dana Point.
That would.
Sign into the uh.
Yeah, but I, I thought this is more of a, you know, project by project.
There's a separate guideline for that. This is specific to identifying Los Molinos.
It's a lot. That needs to be designed soon.
It would. It would be a, a, like our other public works projects, like when we did the I five overpass, the design of the bridge, right? Yeah, designer review subcommittee meetings, it went to the city council. So it would be a, a process like you're used to. When you go to the planning commission, things are reviewed. There'd be opportunity for public comment.
It's like a OG surfer dude, you know what I mean? Like bronze statues and.
Well, I was also thinking, was it there, uh, uh, specific section here to talk about somehow having the property identified with this, this. Didn't we look at that the other day when we were going through this? Or maybe I was mistaken?
No, I, I don't recall anything like that. It's, this is, this is the only guideline in here pertaining to identifying Los Molinos. But the projects over time, as they're improved, will look more like, you know, the vision, right? And in, in effect, is marketing Los Molinos.
That, that sign is gonna be important. Identifies.
Good point. Okay. Other comments on? Back to chapter seven? A couple pages, I think. Hearing none? Comments on any of the maps or exhibits or anything else? No?
So if we've gone, we've gone through the proposed document.
We, well, we've gone through the specific plan and then there's two other after this.
Yeah. So we, I just had one question on uh, Jay, the zoning districts. Um, that's oh, it's like the second one in there. I don't know what this is, page.
This is the zoning.
Section J.
Yeah, it's, it's the first one with the, the Los Molinos area and the, and the city yard is in the, has something called a residential high density color. And I just was wondering if you could explain that on the zoning district.
Oh, it's just the, the color gradient of the map, you know, there.
Oh, am I misinterpreting?
The one on the far lower right.
Oh, I'm misinterpreted.
It's somewhere else.
Gotcha. Okay, good. That's good. That, that answers my question.
Section J.
Yeah.
Cause that was gonna be my comments, the, the West Pico corridor specific plan color, the WPCSP. And then look at the RH residential high density. They're almost the same.
Hmm. They, they, they look very, they look very similar. She did not encourage contrasting colors.
Yeah.
So I see the problem. They're close, but they're different.
They are, yeah.
Okay, I withdraw.
Do I have, uh, do I have, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, support to use a bright color? Harmonizes?
Just as long as it's not highly reflective.
Okay. I, at your direction, I will do that.
Okay, so it sounded like you guys, like staff, you guys were about to guide us to a different thing.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to clarify that we went through the specific plan document, noted a couple, a change. There was some discussion. There were, there were a number of changes that staff went over in the errata to begin with. There was a change that was discussed by the planning commission. We will get back to the four properties in, in just a minute. We, um, we just looked at one of the other documents that needs to be reviewed. And then there's one more after that.
Okay.
Four, four little things that we'll run through and then we can circle back to any final questions or um, motions and approvals.
Fantastic. Yes, and if anybody needs a break.
So did we, so we skipped H and I?
No, we didn't want to go.
We should go to.
Question on H. Tab H is the coastal lane use plan amendment. That's the next item.
Okay, great.
And.
Oh, this. Macken has a question on that.
Should I just summarize what this is all about?
Please.
Okay, so this, similar to the general plan amendment, this updates maps. So this updates the lane use map and the overlays map to reflect the architectural overlay expansion, the expansion of the specific plan area. And then the, the change of the lane use to those two parcels. That's the extent of this lane use plan amendment.
Commissioner McCacken's other.
Well, and look, I, I spent a couple of hours staring at twenty-one B and twenty-one's or two dash one dash B and two dash one dash C. I don't see any difference. Or maybe you could point it out to me.
Uh, the difference. Uh, the difference, uh, wait, two. Oh, oh, yeah, I, staff made a mistake of this, sorry.
And the same thing.
Staff made a mistake that somehow the map got printed more than once in here, so.
Same thing with F and G.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so if you go by the figure. Figure two dash one dash B and then it's two dash one dash C and then two dash, there's just multiple copies. Uh, I apologize for that.
The B and C are the same and F and G are the same.
They're all the same, they're all the same. It's just, there's one map. There's, there's four maps that are changing. Two dash one dash B, two dash one dash C. Two dash one. Dash.
What are the differences? Cause I don't see any differences between B and C and F and G.
I'm just gonna, okay, I'm just gonna call the page numbers, okay? So page H eight. H eight shows the land use change of the two parcels. In Los Molinos. On Avenida De La Australia. So that's H eight, okay? So that's the only figure two dash one dash B. Ignore the next. Two pages in the, the binder. There are duplicates, you can tear them out. They're the same thing.
So you tear out C?
No. I'm just, what's, what's confusing, what's confusing this is there's three copies of each map. There's four maps.
Right, but if you look at them, B and C are identical. Show me where they're different.
B and C.
Twenty-one, two-one C and two-one B.
It's the, the area shown in the maps different. So it's following the coastal, the, the coastline. And B is further south than C. Or do I get it right? C is further north than B. But it's, it's all the, the land use map, just like the general plan, but this is for the coastal plan. So it's limited to the coastal zone.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It's just we made extra copies.
This is the same.
I think you, maybe what would help is to do this. So I am going to suggest that. You rip out. Page H eight and H nine. Rip out page H eight, each eight and each nine. Okay, H eight and H nine rip out.
Maybe that's what he's saying, there's no, there's no difference.
Okay. Uh, what page is that?
Which B?
Eight.
Does that make sense?
Eight, nine, and H ten. About H ten. Rip out. Or, oh, wait, 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 gosh, what's going on here? Yeah, eight, so. Um. This wants ideas, you know? I'm sorry. Let me, give me a second here. Okay, so. What, the only thing that's, the reason why this is confusing is, is that. The figure, the figure is, the figure B is the same on all four pages, but if you look page seven, eight. Nine and ten is just the entirety of the coastal zone.
I know that.
It's the entirety of the coastal zone, but the only map that's changing is H eight.
But if you look at the specific plan where we're working and you look at. Two-one, well, just look at the two areas. They're both identical. Nothing changes between.
Vs and the Cs or something.
Yeah, nothing changes between, what's the difference between?
Yeah, I know, I don't have the four version. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just show this because this is.
Page. Yeah.
That's the change.
So I'm gonna show it on the screen.
Page seven and page eleven are identical.
Okay, this.
Seven.
This.
Right, exactly.
Okay, what, what I'm trying to do here. So, to clarify. Uh, this. Map on the screen. Shows two parcels that are changing, right? The land use. The intent is to update the land use maps in the coastal plan. For a consistent format. And to reflect the two land use changes on the screen. That's the scope of this item.
And to clarify. That map that's being shown right now is exhibit A. That shows the change proposed. Exhibit C is just a final copy.
Yes.
There's no. There's, there's multiple pages of this map, but there's no before and after on this map. It's just the final version. The proposed change is exhibit A, page H five, H five.
Yeah, the only, the only page that's changing in those is H eight.
And it shows the change.
The change on the screen is H eight. The goal of including the four pages though, where the mistake was made is maybe not changing the figure letter, A, B, C, D. Right? But the goal here is just so that all the maps have the same look. But the only change being made is on page H eight for the, what's on the screen.
There we go. This is the one.
Should have been A, B, C, D.
And they didn't change it to all be heavy. So the only change that's. Is that they're like in those persons.
Right, it's the same. So what's the difference between these two? Cause they're the same. These designation C and I use designation B. It's the same.
They're duplicates.
They're duplicates. There's all industrial.
Right, he, he said remove it. It's a dupe. He acknowledged it's a dupe, so you need to take it out. Yeah, the, the change is reflected in exhibit A. All of those maps, they're those, they're duplicates and all they show is the final. The after, check with the change. So the change is in exhibit A. That's the only thing that shows the before and the after.
Yeah, I'm gonna just.
For time's sake, are there any questions on this map change?
No, I get it. I'm gonna. Okay, so I'm just gonna wrap this up. So staff request support. For. Page H eight. The map on, map H eight on page H eight. The map, page H sixteen and the map, page H seventeen. That's showing only the change on the screen and the expansion of the architectural overlay. That's. Eight, sixteen and seventeen. Any questions, comments, or should I go to the next thing? Okay. Uh, section I, or no, no, what was, uh? J? Yeah, J. Uh, first, oh, so I, I want to go to, uh. Page, um, I six, this is the city council draft ordinance. These are the changes to the section of the zoning ordinance. For the architectural overlay district. If you go to, uh, page I six, it shows this, what the clean version of that is. If you want us, you want me to show you what the red line changes are, that's on page K one. But, um, that's the first part of the ordinance or the changes to the code. And that's, any questions? Or I go to the next part? Okay, the next part is J and those are the changes to the maps, which like we just. Uh, navigated, it's the change to the boundary of the specific plan. And it's the change to the architectural overlay best district boundary. And that's the entirety of what's proposed tonight.
Yeah, I see, Adam.
Yeah, so, um, for clarity's sake. The, uh, the proposed changes are entirely contained, uh, within this binder and the errata sheet. That, um, that, uh, Chris has, uh, started us off with, but has made additions too. So we've got a few things, um, to, um, that we would like a motion. On or any additional comments, questions, uh, concerns from the, uh, commission? If you would like, I'll have Chris go through each of the, kind of the, the, the things that need to be passed. Um, and there's one addition to that, which has not been, uh, incorporated into, uh, any of the documents that, uh, Chris will lead us through. And that is those four lots that were brought up. There was some interest from the commission to look into that. Um, and so. We welcome any discussion or questions, uh, of staff for clarification.
I have a question on those lots. So clearly. Chris said that staff would not support adding that, that fourth lot, the corner lot, the southerly most lot.
Hotel.
Right. Um.
You, you know, I, here's what, here's what I'll say. There's some history on a lot of these neighboring properties. Um, at this point in time, if the planning commission would like to make a recommendation. Then we will take that recommendation forward. It's, it's, I don't want to say that staff will or will not support anything at this time. It'd be, this is, this is not something that came up. It was not part of council's direction. Staff has not spent much time looking at these four lots and wondering what, you know, how, how well would this, this fit in? So I, I don't, I don't want to say we won't support anything or we're aga- against something. We were just following council direction.
Okay, Adam, can I?
There's a hotel on the fourth line?
So just, just, it just.
South floor. I thought he was talking about down here by the boys and girls club.
So if I could.
He's talking about.
I want it.
On East floor?
I just want to explain.
Can you, can you pull that, can you pull up exhibit until we can clarify which lots we're talking about?
Yes, so I, just to, just to make a note here that. Okay, so, uh.
Hang on just one second. Commissioner McCacken, he's pulled up on, he's pulling up on the screen. Walk us through where they are.
So I have a map that I created here because we, um. You know, staff had some anticipation that this topic could come up and we actually did look at these properties some. Uh, to be prepared this evening and. I created this map to, in the event that it came up to, um. Just ex- explain, like, um, this, Adam had noted. This is pretty early for staff and we haven't had a lot of time on this. It's more of just staff's preliminary. Assessment of the properties and this district boundary. Uh, just excludes the hotel. If there's desire by the commission to include the hotels, well, then the, the map would reflect that. This.
What, what's the name of that hotel?
The roadway and.
Yeah, so it's not the one that we just allowed to sign back on?
No, Casablanca.
Okay, so there's a little hotel there, right?
Yeah, this is exactly right, Christopher. But I, I, this is what I would propose. So you have it right.
So I, I guess. I questioned my fellow commissioners, are, you know, are you guys kind of familiar with this properties and recommend? What, what's your thoughts about recommending to council that consider adding?
Yeah, we just would recommend that they expand the boundaries to include those three parcels, uh, to the south as, uh. Being Los Molinos in the back. That they should be in the district.
Yeah, Los, Los Molinos in the back and Spanish in the front, Spanish colonial revival.
Yep.
I agree. I drove it today and it, it fits it perfectly, in my opinion.
Okay, I've walked it several times.
Commissioner Crandall, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
You know, I don't know the topography of them. I'm also curious about where that line is that you start. The Spanish colonial revival and start going with the. I mean, are we put a false front? And then have Los Molinos design guidelines do everything behind the false front? I don't know how this is.
Yeah, so, um. For the, for the ease of, of, of doing this. Their, the request, um, was to include additional properties. Um, or the recommendation that I'm, I'm getting from the planning commission is to include additional properties. To be consistent with the land use and zoning designation of the neighboring properties. Is that correct? That, there's a number of changes that need to occur to both maps, specific plan, um, that, uh.
Uh, yeah, the general plan, just about every component of the, the project, the amendments would be touched by this change.
So we just want to make it clear, the, the, the desire is to, um. Change the, change the zoning and because we're talking about including them in this specific plan now.
Yeah, so the change specifically would be to add these properties to the West Pico corridor specific plan and. And that would basically cover and, and then ref, update maps and text accordingly.
That's it. Okay, there, there's, there was a, an issue of the split architectural guidelines, correct? I want to make sure that that's getting reflected.
Well, I, I, I'm a little concerned that. We haven't had a meeting where these property owners have an opportunity to voice their personal opinion, whether they want to be included or not. I'm not gonna make an, uh, uh, decision until they do. So I'm for saying it passes until the next, uh, amendment. We don't address changing those now, cause, um, I think Chris is working on a short timeframe as designated by the city council. I see that this would slow it down. We'd have to have another meeting that. These guys have noticed and into a public hearing, so we can hear their opinion on whether they want to be here.
So there is a offer.
Or own those three properties?
And it may be coming back.
So.
You own one, I, I'm uncomfortable too. So we had two of the, we had two of the owners here tonight requesting this.
Two of the three.
Only the three. I think it was.
We're here.
No, cause he said, the other guy sitting next to him owns the other one.
So to those two lots, huh?
Would it not be cleaner though? Because we're, we're making changes in multiple documents. If all the changes were made and everything was looking to be split, would it be cleaner than for those three properties or for properties? Just to come on as a single amendment to add and did the specific plan? Because we got a lot, we got a lot more things going on here than just the specific plan.
Okay, so. Um, the options, let's say. Let's say that, that all three property owners actually want to do this. The cleanest option. Um, especially for the property owners would be to have a recommendation from the planning commission that council takes this on. In the meantime, staff can. That council takes this on. In the meantime, staff can contact the third property owner. Say this is what the planning commission has recommended. Give them notice, you know, of the of the proposed change. And if they don't like it, then staff would tell the council that and I. You know, I would have to think that the council would would respect the property owner's desire to not rezone their particular property. If the desire, if they if they if all three did want to do this. The planning commission is not comfortable making that recommendation and nothing gets done. Then the three property owners could initiate their own amendment in the future. And that would be quite costly to them. That would require quite a bit of time and money to do that if the. Um and then the 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 last option is, it turns out none of them actually want to do it, even though we know that some of them do. The planning commission can then uh, you know, move a recommendation forward and and staff would.
Well, staff has been meeting with these with all these business owners for a while, right?
But not those three.
No, but this is the first time it's come up.
But I'll just add that. When this goes to city council, there'll be another public notice and Adams. As Adam's saying, we could reach out to these property owners. So there's still opportunity for them to have their input. And this isn't a final action, this is a recommendation.
Yeah, I think to be fair to them, we give them the opportunity to join. What is here, but it still needs to qualify through them and the city council.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation.
We're not proven that this happens.
We're saying we support it.
Yeah, of course, why?
Well, I'm not sure I disagree.
Well, I've been there.
I don't know the topography and exactly the sight line. I've certainly been around the site, but I wasn't looking for that specific uh issue.
Hmm, well, okay, you couldn't get, can you, could you um?
Because there's, it seems to me there's a difference between, you know, recommending to council, hey, we support adding these three versus. We support you consider adding these three. Subject to staff outreach specifically to those three property owners prior to those council meetings. There's a specific invitation, hey, you know, they're going to be looking at and talking about your projects, your property. On such and such a date, and then they they can come and object or write a letter or whatever, but those two guys will probably be happy.
Yeah.
Would that be outside the resolution?
Staff, staff can take forward a recommendation from the planning commission. Um or I should say staff will be presenting this project to the city council. Um in in an upcoming meeting and as a part of that project. We're presenting planning commission's recommendation. That can be part, a full part of the recommendation. So there's one recommendation, adopt all of this and include these. Uh these properties or um adopt uh, you know, the these documents as proposed and. Planning commission is not opposed to. Including these 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 properties. If that's the case, though, it's it um. Doesn't, it doesn't really come off as being all that well betted.
I think, but I think I think you could say though that, hey, the planning commission wasn't comfortable because they didn't. It wasn't included in the original thing, but two of the three property owners showed up and said they want or one of two of them showed up in in support. So they weren't comfortable recommending, but they wanted you guys to consider it. And now in advance of the council meeting, we've had time to. Get with them and meet them and look at the topography and staff supports it or doesn't support it, I don't know, but. We just can't give a, it sounds like a full throated recommendation to them on that issue, this commissioner Crandall can't. Um given that. It wasn't prepped for it. But that could be explained to council, I would think.
Is it possible to bring that up? I mean, for orientation across the street from these guys is that park in the Boys and Girls Club field? So it's kind of on the just the uprise kind of where you're going up that hill a little bit. So I know what you're saying. Topography wise, is there a way to bring it up on the screen and and we could orientate a little bit?
Um we we can, we can bring, we can bring it up. I I will say this, it it's um. Staff would prefer a recommendation by the planning commission. If 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 it's just a a, if if it's, if it's just something that's not offensive to the planning commission. I'm not really, I I'm not convinced how much direction we really have to take up these types of issues. On the spot, you know, we we're we're working under council direction here. And so unless it's a recommendation that necessitates staff time, I, you know, this is, this is really. I I want to be cognizant of staff's time. And if if the planning commission isn't even. That behind the the rec- the request, then. You know, I I. I just, I wouldn't want to waste, you know, ci- city resources on something that.
There's, I mean, there's, there's.
Have a recommendation.
There's kind of like two ways that I see to present this. There's one where it's a recommendation in which. Staff would make the changes to the documents and gi- given to the council and say that this was staff, the planning commission's recommendation, right? And there was public comment, we reached out to the property owners, assuming that they all are on board, so on. If second to that would be, there's planning commission comments about this. There um, there wasn't a recommendation, but there was some support. There was support by the property owners. We would give the council the documents, basically what you have tonight with the edits we've discussed. And we would go to the meeting and the council would direct us on whether they want us to make that change.
That's the way we want it. Well, I I mean, we're all one vote, right? I've been there. I looked at it. I put in the time. I went and looked at this knowing that. Because during our meeting, I brought these three or four lots up, you know, as part of that meeting. And uh, you know, that's my, we could bring it up here to make anybody else feel comfortable or not. But I don't want to put these guys through a financial wringer.
Well, that's a question I'm going to ask. Who who's paying for this plan amendment here?
City.
Okay, because who? Who initiated it?
City council.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be the applicant has to initiate it. The city can then initiate because of this suggestion that three are those four and they don't have to pay a cent.
But it's still expensive for the city.
It shouldn't be used as an argument that we should do something tonight, because we've been working on the, I, this is the only thing I have. We need to be kind of out and the public needs to have have plenty of time to look at something. And now here in the very last two percent of this whole process, we're throwing in a. You know, a little bit, I think, although it may be all perfectly legal. Still, the public, it doesn't seem quite, because then what prevents from somebody else from saying, well, throw me in too?
Well, so if you if you looked at it, if they, I think it's just a misstep somehow, because. If you look at all ten buildings, if you separated those two with Spanish colonial, it would look so out of whack. It would look like, what the hell did somebody do, in my opinion? But, you know, I mean, I'll defer to everybody's vote and everybody could kind of, you know, vote their way, but I'm just, I want to say.
We haven't given this moving to these four additional properties. We're just sort of like, okay, can you tell me that they, you know, match into it? Because this, this isn't just something that we've been doing the last couple of months. And it's not just the first attempt. He would, he was noticed. He's known for a long time that he could ask to extend the border.
Can we take a little straw poll on this issue? I guess the two issues are one. We recommend to council that they add these three parcel parcels. Or we don't make that recommendation, right? That's the, that's kind of the issue at hand. Because Adam doesn't want to have halfway recommendations.
So this is, there's one of three things that will be presented to council. This is planning commissions, part of their recommendation is that these properties be included. Um they, planning commission recommends what staff has proposed right in front of you.
Right, and we're sizing under three.
You're saying you should consider adding these parcels. And if they want to, they could initiate a separate. And future amendment for that, for those four parcels alone, which. Um or or the third one is, if you would like, we can just in include in our staff report to the council. Members of the public showed up to talk about these four lots and there was interest, planning commission recommended. That this be, that the council be notified of these comments specifically, and there's no recommendation. It's just for the record, these, two of these three property owners or four property owners. At requested that this change occur.
I I just want to, I I want to make a a little note here that. This project, along with other specific plans, are part of the local coastal program effort we have going on. And we're trying to time everything together. So if there's desire to make these changes. It would be a lot more timely to do it with this effort. It it doesn't necessarily need to require a recommendation from this body. City council can direct staff to make these changes. My main point is. Like the land use changes for those two parcels that was deferred in the pure bowl plan. And it's like two years later, right? And we're doing this project. It can take time, so.
Could could I have one question, Adam?
Yeah.
On your second option, which was you could send it to council and then council could choose to ask to do a future amendment to add the three. Council could also. Not vote to approve it and go back to staff and say, hey, please look at these three and bring it back to us in two weeks or a month, right? So and included in this version rather than starting a whole new version just for those three parcels.
Yes.
Yeah, that was second.
Well, no, but his second one was do a different amendment later, adding those three parcels.
But can I speak to this?
Please.
Okay, I just want to put everything into a box. We heard, we had two landowners come and talk about their parcels. So let's stop talking about four. Let's stop talking about three. It was two. And they were very clear that they're on the edge, right next to it, and then the next one over. They were very clear that they are part of the Los Molinos. They're part of the surf culture. The the testimony was in the first building, that was the first surf forming building in San Clemente. This, and he also said that the building next to him is currently doing surf forming now. And that's it. We're not talking about four or three, just those two. Uh I have been down there a number of times. You guys know I've been spending a lot of time with the association and I happen to have gone through this area very well. Uh there's no, there's no difference between the parcel next to it and that and that parcel that that gentleman came to talk to tonight. They look the same. So if you're gonna, and all we're suggesting is that they came here, they're asking to be included in the district so that they can have. The Los Molinos architecture guidelines apply to them in the rear. That's it, the rear. And it fits perfectly. It's an easy, it's an easy call to make. Um otherwise, they're going to be, they're going to be under the current, which is Spanish. So there'll be Spanish in the rear. It's not going to look Los Molinos. And there's surf shops. It doesn't make any sense. So that's, that's my feeling on it.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm I'm really concerned that this wasn't noticed to the public. And yes, two people showed up. But the public didn't have the opportunity to review it and say yay or nay.
We're going to clean that up though, right now.
They can, they can't at the council though. They can't at the council meeting.
Yeah, but how can we approve it if we know?
We're not approving.
We're not, well, you're giving a recommendation to do it.
To consider.
And until I know that the public is on board with it. I think all we can say is, please consider it. Have it noticed at the city council meeting that this is a potential change. So the public has to say yay or nay, the landowner and surrounding. People, the, because nobody was noticed within three hundred feet of it.
Well, that's technically really out of the lane of this whole meeting, that the, this, this was not noticed that way. This was not noticed of three.
We're making a reference.
But we're not, but but technically, we weren't, that if you look at how this was noticed. It wasn't noticed within three hundred feet of every, not all parcels were noticed. The people who were noticed were only the people that were on his list. We didn't notice the whole area. So your whole framework is not actually applied here. Um public did not have an opportunity to come. I think it's cleanest, I think it's cleanest, this is my opinion. Let's approve what you put here and just pass on to the council. If there was a member of the public that said they wanted to have their two pieces of property included. And with that information, the council can do what they want. And plus staff has had now. Maybe you'll have two weeks, I don't know when the next council meeting is, to talk to the pro- the two property owners, maybe even find out the third one. But I think we've been working on this for a while. Tell the council, fine, whatever we said. But by the way, where the public came forward and they want to be included. You guys decide. That's at least going to give you two, two weeks to maybe notice or find out if you need to notice.
Yeah, so this will not be on the next council meeting. That's a very quick turnaround. Um but it will be on a near future council meeting. Uh and I do want to clarify one thing about the record. This item was properly publicly noticed um for items that uh affect a substantial amount of the city. Um uh property owners, a uh larger, um an eighth page ad in newspaper is what is required. We're not, we're not required to post every single property or mail to every single property owner within three hundred feet.
So that's why I say it is noticed.
However, it was, it was noticed, but it wasn't noticed. I think what you're getting at is that.
Right.
Yeah, it's noticed with the project description and there has been what I would call an interested parties list. Based on the work that the city has been doing, which did not include these particular properties.
That's the thing, that's the problem.
We also sent.
Notice area farther out.
We also, we also sent public notices in the mail to property owners and properties. Where the boundary would change to the civic plan, the architectural relay expansion and the land use change. So we went beyond what's required to notify those properties. Thank you for clarifying.
So the one, the one thing I would say, Commissioner Crandall, to what you said is that. That that all sounds great. The only problem with that is that. Adam said, hey, if you guys don't give us a full throated recommendation to add it, we're not going to work on it. So they're not, so they're not going to go take any additional effort to council to.
Other than the statement to them to consider.
Right, right.
But then, then that slows up the process. If we, if we give them the recommendation, they said they're gonna, well.
Because we can't spend money.
I'm not spending anybody's money.
We're, we're spending staff's money to do this.
Okay, that's what we do all the time.
No, it's not.
What do you mean?
That this was initiated by city council, so all this is being paid.
I understand, so we can't give them a to do.
Scope of the project. That requires city council to authorize you guys to do it.
I would say that this is not uh out of the scope of typical uh work that um requires a planning commission recommendation going to council. There are some changes that can be changed. This, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I, this isn't a a substantial amount of work um to to make this type of change. Um it would, it could potentially slow down the process in one of two ways for these properties. Or this entire project. And it is, if there's no recommendation to include this as part of. What your, what the, what this body is recommending the council adopt. Then council would be, would look, would take your recommendation to consider it. And say, we do want to add it and want to add it to this process. That means that they most likely would not add it that night. That it's actually there. It would delay the the entire project at that point. Or they would say, you know, in the future, we would like to do this and. I and based, I mean, based on our our hard resources and and staff direction for these types of changes. It would probably take years to get back to this.
Can I add to that?
Can I, can I ask one question for someone, please?
Yeah.
Mel? Do you have any, I just want to hear your thoughts. You've heard us, you know, chewing on this for a while. Do you have anything to add that will enlighten us?
Yeah, every approach that's been outlined is legally sound, right? Um I understand the concern with uh with recommended approval when you haven't actually had a chance to review the details of it. Um but the approaches uh from a recommendation um uh to to approve everything to recommendation to consider. To just noting the fact that people came and spoke and the council meant that what they want. Each of those approaches is completely sound. Um what what we couldn't do tonight is make a decision if we were the, the. The, the final body on this because it hadn't, it hadn't been noticed as part of the agenda item because you're recommending. And they come and made comment, you can forward that onto the council. So it's really planning commissions prerogative, um, how you want to proceed, but legally. Every approach works.
But if we, if, if it's not included in the, in going to council, if we don't recommend including it. Then it won't be included in council's version and council would have to. Bring it back and we notice it changing the project.
They have to somehow figure out on their own that this is an issue, because if it wasn't included in any transmittal to the council, they wouldn't know that it's an issue. So you'd have to either note that there were commenters who spoke about this. You can do with it what you want. Or in your recommendation, say, there were those who spoke, we recommend you looking at this, or we recommend you. Approving as part of the package. Those are really your three options, as was previously out.
So just by adding that commentary in the staff report. Counsel could then legally add those into the boundary.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, or push it back to commission for further review. It's entirely council's prerogative.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to make sure that there, there's clarification here. If, if this is not part of the. Planning Commission's recommendation, but it's an all, you know, maybe also consider. And the, could the council make those changes at the time of their public hearing on this item? Or would they need to initiate additional changes or request that the item be continued to another meeting? So it all that. Okay, so unless it's part of the recommendation, it will, could not be voted on at the count, at the council meeting. That this item gets presented at, which I'm thinking is a month, month and a half.
Well. It also depends on how you present it. So if, for example, we presented. This, what you have before you, right? And then there is an exhibit, almost like an errata, that says if you support this change. For adding the boundary, here are twenty pages that you would be adopting like an errata.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And we approve it. They can just approve it. You don't have to have another meeting. So the question about the timing and how it would affect this process. Uh. You know, at, at the most, it may delay it two weeks, but you know what I'm mindful of as staff is. When you have another meeting, that's a month or a month and a half. So if we were to take the planning commission's recommendation, you could, you could direct us to do what I just said. Make it a separate, like a decision package almost, right? They like to do it. They can adopt it. Um, and then it could be one meeting. And maybe it delays it two weeks versus a month and a half and having a second city council meeting. So that, that's my two cents.
I, I, I think we've talked about it enough. I think we ought to go around and hear from each person individually. What their thoughts are and then see if there's a consensus on one thing or another. Does that make sense to you guys?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner McCackens.
My preference is that. You recommend the council approval and change the debate so far with all the stockings. Let the council know forward the information. And the two people that requested that they be added to it, let the council make that decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
My concern is we're gonna miss the mark. We've been, I, I believe this has been since twenty fourteen that this has been. Kind of moving forward. Am I right on that? It's been a long time, I believe, right?
This particular project in front of you was initiated by the city council uh, in twenty twenty one.
Yeah, but the, the whole thing, and, but they finally got to in twenty one.
Yes.
So started two thousand fourteen, as far as I know, and we're finally here. For to wait a, a month or two to get it right and get that final little nugget. I know, I, I, I think we missed the boat if we relied on the city council to initiate those guys. And not only that is. The historical value in those buildings specifically, and they're already shaping, literally shaping and fixing surfboards. Out in the front of their building now. That would be really weird Spanish. I think we're, we're gonna miss the mark if we don't give the, the option to the city council. And I like your, how you said it, the last recommendation, Chris.
That's, that's beautiful.
Mr. Kim.
Okay, I. Think what Christopher said, the last thing he said, which is to include it as a recommended errata. Is the way to go. Because we're not making the decision anyway. That's we're recommending that they look at it. And decide, but they'll have the opportunity to do it like within two weeks. So I think that's, I think we agree. Essentially, that's what.
So question on that, because I thought I heard earlier, Adam, you, you're saying if we didn't fully recommend it, your staff wasn't gonna spend time on it, but. Are you, is staff now willing to do an, a, a rata as a potential option to council?
If that's what the planning commission's more comfortable with, um, it, it's basically, yeah, we're fine with that.
So my, my thoughts are. We're doing a big disservice to those property owners to not include them or give them the recommendation. With a specific charge to make sure you please notify them and so they can go and pose it to council if we want. But we sure know that two of the three want it. So, um, and, and doing it as a separate effort is cost inefficient. Um, now's the time. So. I'm on, if I, if there was a train, I'd be on Davis's train, which is recommend it. The council recommend that they add it and do it now. I understand the discomfort for certain reasons. Um, but I could go forward with, you know, have a recommended errata. Um, and, and I want to vote for anything that forwards this to council in an approvable way. Because I think it's to everybody's benefit, the cities and those property owners. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. And I would just add, because we're trying to wrap this up with the whole coastal commission package, we gotta just do it as a package. Let's just, we're here now, the patient's open, let's just finish it. The other thing is, you know, when I first got into this and I walked around the, the community of Los Molinas. It took a little bit of time for them to get comfortable with all this stuff. Now we have it to the point where people are coming to us saying, please, I want in. Let's declare victory and, 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 and do, and do the errata recommendation.
To that note, yeah. Los Molinos was in when we did the vision saying for the general plan was even revised. So they've been in a long time. Upgrading the thing. Um. I'm for approving the resolution that we have in front of us. With a recommendation to consider, but I'm not saying that. I'm giving them a recommendation to approve.
Well, that's up to them, right? With the errata, they'll just choose themselves.
Let them choose that it's a recommendation to consider rather than.
But he would include the errata.
So they could.
So it'd be approvable.
Yeah.
And it, and if we're doing that, any motion, I would like to see specific. You know, task to, to staff to specifically reach out to those three affected property owners. And, and try and conduct them, make them aware of the council meeting and stuff, because that's important.
On the, on the tail end, we're talking about, you already got two, but the third one, but let's not include, we're not including, is that correct? So let's not use the term four anymore.
Yeah.
Well, but actually the thing is that, you know, I haven't been in government on planning commissions before. I just am uncomfortable making a boundary change in a specific plan. Because that's usually big to like residents. So now you're moving closer, you're moving however many feet you are closer to your original boundary. But the boundary change is just in a rod, like I'm gonna change the redevelopment area and I'm just gonna throw it in as an errata.
So, so we will notify the property owners. Um, if this is where, if this is the planning commission's recommendation. Uh, make them aware, any conversations we have, we would reiterate to the city council, as, as, along with inviting them to the meeting. It turns out they're not supportive of it. They will have ample opportunity to, to voice their concerns. Um, so that, that issue should be addressed. However, I, you know, I, I do understand your, your concerns with that. So. I'm seeing.
It sounds like we have a consensus on moving the errata.
It sounds like we have a majority, majority of the commissioners supportive of moving the errata forward.
We can vote it separately if Mr. McCacken doesn't want to vote for it.
I'm for it.
You can vote no too.
He just said he's for it.
Okay, then we're good.
Okay, so I, I think.
You know, I, it's just my thing, having been on the council before and.
It's like an alternative.
I only have one property. Uh, because of notice, because it got closer to his property.
Yes.
Was able to go to court and just kill the whole thing.
So I, I, I do want to make one, so one thing that's really important, I think that, that's being lost a little bit. So by moving this specific plan boundary, there's two effects to that, okay? The first is it clarifies what the design is on the back of the properties to be Los Molinos. But the other thing is if there are existing shapers there, there are currently non-conforming uses. They're not supposed to be there right now, under the current zoning. If you move the boundary, now they're conforming uses. So that's a benefit of moving the boundary, because you're allowed in this civic plan to have the shape being in the back. So, just make it.
To do, yeah.
So I, uh, go ahead, Adam.
So are we at the point where we can start moving forward with potential motion?
I was gonna ask you to guide us through how to make a motion.
Yes, so I will have, uh, Chris walk us through, uh, each of the, um, I'll, I'll say each of the documents. Or sections that need a motion and an approval. Um, and have him. Uh, maybe it's best, especially for the errata sheet, I'll, I'll have staff. Um, describe the proposed, um, staff's recommendation for, for, uh. The, uh, the commission's a, approval for a recommendation. And you can just refer to what he says and without having to repeat it in its entirety. Just to make sure we're covering all.
And he'll just reference the errata that he provided to commission and revised on the screen to commission also, right?
Yes.
There's, there's one item that was also going to be deferred, and that was whether it's eight feet or ten feet of landscaping.
I think you have ten feet in the document and I kind of heard a consensus, you have ten feet alone.
Okay, so then I have, I'm gonna show on the screen.
Would you have any comment on the EIR?
Now, the EIR, so what the effect would be as, and we'll call it the alternative versus errata. So when it goes to the city council, if, if the, this is the motion. Um, the alternative would include amendments to the addendum, the EIR addendum maps. So it would include every, every single thing that would need to change to move the boundary. And it might seem like a crazy amount of work, but, um, it might not be. It, just the way that all these maps are produced, it, it, it might not be as bad as it may seem. Um, so I, I'm confident, let's put it this way, I'm confident it would save at least a month. To do it that way, then to go to council and then do another council meeting. It'd save at least a month.
Yeah, more than a month.
Yeah, so, so, um, to, so as far as what. Let me, um. So, uh, this is a thing. So the errata that is prepared and given to you. While it doesn't show the, the red line on the screen, it fully. The only changes to it are the wall section, about what we were talking about with the colors. So it would be. You could say to, to, um, adopt the resolution with the errata. Um, and to change on page or change page one on the rata. To strike avoid and replace it with discourage in the second sentence. And insert avoid before highly reflective, and that would cover everything. And if you want to make that even easier, I did it on this draft and I can give it to the chair. That, sound good?
Was that clear? Yes, okay, if somebody wants to make a motion.
So move. I'll, I'll make a motion. Is it, um, under tab, section C? Is that the resolution we're approving?
Yes, that's the planning commission resolution.
It's PC, it's P, it's twenty-two dash zero one seven?
Well, right now, we're just, we're just approving that one change, right? The wall.
Uh, no, so the, the, the motion would be, the motion would be to.
All right, so staff is looking for a, a motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty-two dash zero one seven. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council certified addendum number four to the general plan environmental impact report. Approved general plan amendment twenty-one dash two thirty-eight, specific plan amendment twenty-one dash two thirty-nine, zoning amendment twenty-one dash two forty. And land use plan amendment twenty-one dash two forty-one, to achieve consistency between the general plan, local coastal program. And West Pico corridor specific plan and zoning regulations, change the land use designation of two parcels at fifteen ten Avenue de la Estrella. And expand the architectural overlay district. Um, with the changes identified in the errata sheet, uh, provided, uh, during the meeting. With the change to the, uh, terms avoid. Uh, in the design guidelines as outlined by staff, uh, and on your screen right now. So somebody can.
And the avoid.
Yeah, what do you have, what do you have on the screen?
Yes, yeah.
That's my motion.
It's actually three things, right? It's the resolution with the errata and then. To have staff prepare for the rec, for the city council meeting, a, a new errata to include. Consideration of those additional three parcels.
Let's keep that third separate.
Separate. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, you can just make, you can just move to do what I just said.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think Commissioner McCacken.
Great.
Commissioner McCacken motion, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed?
Roll call it. I.
We, we're hoping to get away from that.
Okay.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes six, nothing. Okay, now, was there an additional?
We have a couple more.
Okay.
Chris, would you like to go through?
Uh, the next one would be whether for the city council to consider. Uh, to forward a recommendation to the city council to consider, including three parcels. As shown on the PowerPoint slide. Uh, I, I had that one slide, if you want me to share it, I can. This one. As shown on this PowerPoint slide, with materials presented for the city council to act upon. At the meeting if they choose to approve the changes and. To direct staff to contact the property owners and, um, as part of that process.
So moved.
Motion by Cosgrove. Second by Camp. All in favor?
I.
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes six, nothing.
That wasn't.
Yeah, that's it.
That is it. All right. That concludes that project. Thank you.
See, that feels really good.
All right.
How about we move to a adjourned?
There's no new business, there's no old business. Any reports from commissioners and staff? Cecilia, I thought maybe you were waiting all this time to tell us something exciting. Okay, um, I, I.
By the way, Chris, excellent work.
Yeah, that's what I want to say, Chris, as a mountain of work, you dovetailed everything in beautifully. You explained it all, you, I mean, I know it was a mountain of work, so we all do, so thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure. Thank you for all your time.
Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Until the next regular planning commission meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at six PM. At the San Clemente Community Center Auditorium, one hundred Kaiser Civil, San Clemente, California.
We should, uh, have a motion and, um, a vote on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, do, do we need to do that, Mel? Okay, okay, I, I undo the adjournment and I, I'm open to a motion.
A motion. Make it as a, you can make a motion.
I move that we adjourn to the next regular planning commission as previously stated.
Is that good?
Uh, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Still move.
All right.